Good afternoon. All right. It's a pleasure to begin this reorg today where we have a new Chair take the mantle. Before the invocation, I would like to welcome the Clerk of Court, Gwen Marshall. I'm sorry, Gwen Knight, excuse me. Later in the program, Clerk Knight will conduct the reorg for our board meeting. First, I also would like to recognize the dignitaries in the room with us today. We have City Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox. There she is over there. Also, our City Manager Reese Gold is here with us today. Superintendent of Schools Rocky Hannes with us today. Former School Board Member Georgia Joy Bowen. Former City Commissioner Elaine Bryant. Tallahassee Chamber President Sue Dick is with us today. Big Ben Minority Chamber President Antonio Jefferson is with us today. And our Honorable Judge Barbara Hobbs is with us today. Did I miss anybody? You know what? I do this all the time. It's not my fault. They gave me a list to work off of. It's not my fault. It wasn't over here. Our task collector Doris Malloy is with us today. And man, listen, a good member of Bethel Missionary Baptist Church. If everybody will please stand, I'll lead us in the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance. To the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, we are going to recognize Pastor Chrissy Griffin to come give us our invocation. Number one, please say.
Let us pray. Father, first we just give your name, honor, glory, and praise for everything that you've done for us. We thank you as we look back over this year from January now to November. You've been good to us, and we give your name the praise, and we give your name the honor. Now, Lord, we thank you because we are here as leaders, as members of this community, and we want to see us go to the next level. It's time for a shift in Tallahassee, and it's time for a shift in Leon County. So bless the leadership, God. Put super on their natural. God, give them wisdom, knowledge, and understanding so they can guide us and navigate us to the next level. Let them know that they're not by themselves, but you promised us that you would be with us even to the end of the days. So, Lord, we're excited because eyes haven't seen, neither has ears heard, the things that you prepared for us. We're ready to see the manifestation of it. Again, we thank you for life. We thank you for life more abundantly, and we thank you for the major shift that's about to take place in our city and our county. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Let everybody say amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you. Reverend Pastor Chrissy Griffin started it, you're with me ended it. I appreciate you, brother. Yes, sir. So now, we recognize Commissioners for their years of service. We do a one-year, five-year, ten-year, beyond pin. If I could have Commissioners O'Keefe, Commissioner Minor, as well as Commissioner Caban, me as lecturer. Thank you. This year, we recognize Commissioners Caban and Commissioner O'Keefe for one year of service to our county. We also recognize Commissioner Minor for five years of service to our county. On behalf of the citizens of Leon County, which we all serve, I want to take a moment and recognize your service and provide you with a token of appreciation from county staff, the rest of the county, as well as the Commission, Commissioner Caban. Commissioner Caban, I would like to congratulate you on completing your first year as a county commissioner. I commend you for your dedication to the county, and I present you with your one-year pin. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This has been arguably one of the highest honors of my life thus far, and working with every single one of you up there is something that you truly can't put into words. Every single day when you go out and see the impacts of the work you do in the community is something that I'm extremely thankful for, and I'm looking forward to another year of great service with you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Keefe, recognized for one year of service. In Leon County, as well as the board and staff, as well as the county. We want to thank you for your years of service and give you an opportunity to say a few words.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chairman. First, I just want to say thank you to staff who apparently have not bugged them enough to not get a pin, so I very much appreciate goodwill. And I just want to say that after one year, I want to thank the citizens who gave me this opportunity from the bottom of my heart to serve you and as always let me know if you are not happy with how that's going, or if you're happy with how it's going. Thank you.
Last but not least, I want to present a five-year pin to Commissioner Minor for his service to District Three. On behalf of the citizens of District Three, as well as the rest of the county, we thank you for your service, the Commission as well. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chairman Maddox. You know, five years ago, I was sworn into this office as a county commissioner. Five days before my swearing-in, my youngest daughter was born. And maybe against the better judgment of our doctors, we actually brought her to the floor here to witness that. So, serving on the county commission has been the greatest honor of my life. It really continues to be an incredible honor and pleasure to serve the people that live here in this county, and it's an honor and a pleasure to serve with all my colleagues on the county commission. Thanks to everybody.
Under normal circumstances, when we give the pin, we usually stick it dead into your chest and draw a little blood, given the fact that we're in a new millennium, and, you know, there's lawsuits about stuff like that. We won't do it that way this year. I want to recognize now Vice Chair Carolyn Cummings to conduct the rest of this portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and to each of you. I'm directing my comments to our Chairman, Commissioner Nick Maddox. I want you to know, Chairman Maddox, that it has been a pleasure to work as your Vice Chair for this last year. As you conducted the business of the Chair, you did so in an exceptional manner, in a professional manner, and you conducted our board meetings in a congenial manner. And for this and much more services you have provided to the community as Chair over this last year, I'm very honored to present to you this gavel and plaque, and it's designed to commemorate all of your service and dedication this last year. So, if you will stand with me, we'll display the plaque, and it says, "An appreciation for your outstanding and dedicated leadership." Congratulations. And now, I'd like to recognize the greatest county administrator on planet Earth.
There we go.
Mr. Vincent Long for remarks.
Is there not a plaque that I can get that says that on it? Folks, we have a little tradition here at the county. During the reorganization ceremony, we're on behalf of all the men and women of Leon County. I present to the outgoing Chairman a collage that captures all of the events that we require our Chairman to be at each year. It's a tall task throughout the year, early mornings, late nights, holidays. He tried to get the Vice Chairman to go a few times, but she was there to pitch in when he wasn't available. But Chairman Maddox, this has been a really busy year and a momentous year that was highlighted with a lot of achievements, but I just want to thank you again on behalf of all the men and women of Leon County for your chairmanship. Thank you for always being so available to us, especially during the activation of Hurricane Adalia, which was, again, quite tasking. And with that, I'd like to present this collage to you. It has a lot of pictures of you on it, so I know you will proudly display this. Thank you again.
Thank you. They have an opportunity for me to provide comments, and I'll be brief. But I wanted to take this top opportunity to thank the county administrator and the county attorney for their steady leadership of staff. You guys get the opportunity to watch us take votes every now and then and set policy for the county, but when it comes down to the nitty-gritty and who's really, really making it happen for the county is the leadership of County Administrator Vince Long and Chastity Osteen, who really, really keep us going. Your staffs are absolutely amazing. I know from experience of having to run a few staffs myself that you cannot do what you do, and you can't have a top organization without having good staff people, and I think that's a nod to how well you develop your talent and how well you pick folks from our community to be a part of Leon County. And let me say that for those staff members who are a part of Leon County, it is indeed an honor to work with you, all the staff members of Leon County, but more than that, it is an honor for you to work at Leon County. This is probably far one of the most efficiently-run and best-run organizations we have here in Leon County. I believe in what we do here, the leadership as well as the staff. My Commissioners, it has been a great year leading you as Chair. It's always good when you have new blood and you get to be their first Chairman, and so I appreciate the collegial manner in which we conduct ourselves. I've always said that we may not agree with everything that we say amongst each other on this dais, but we don't take it off the dais. I appreciate that about what we do here at Leon County. We've had some good discussions, we've had some heated discussions, we've had some peaceful discussions, but what I appreciate most is that we work together as a team and that we don't carry any animosity for our own efforts to work hard for our respective districts. Whether it be at large or a particular district, we don't carry that animosity off of the dais, so I think that makes a good team. So, and I will say that Commissioner Caban, Commissioner O'Keefe, having to come into a board that has folks that have been here for a while and find your way around and figure out how things are going. You have jumped in feet-first, made some motions, attempted to make some changes, not afraid to make mistakes, and that's what this is all about. That's what this is all about, is a learning process. And so, I commend you for your first year and how you've handled yourself. To my Dean, Commissioner Bill Proctor, we've been doing this thing a long time, and I never stopped learning from you. I never, ever stopped learning from you. I've watched you do this in ways that are unconventional, and then at times I've watched you do things that, quite frankly, change the way we do things in the county, but in a very conventional way. And so, I appreciate you. I'm glad that you're here to provide that steady leadership, that knowledge from things that happened 15 years ago before any of us were here, but most of all, that in the way that you represent your district, I think you teach us all how districts are supposed to be represented. And so, as you continue to serve us as the Dean of our Commission, don't think it lost on any of us that your wisdom and your knowledge as a county commissioner goes far beyond anything that we can hope to gain in a few years that we may be here. You are appreciated, brother. I, they wrote some more stuff on here, but I'm gonna go quick from the heart because I don't like reading. It's been a year in our community where it's been ups and downs, but I can say that on most things, we've stuck together as a community. We've made it through things that some communities, quite frankly, don't make it through. There's attempts to divide us as a community, whether it be by district, whether it be by race, whether it be by gender, but time and time again, we find a reason to stay together as one community in Tallahassee. If we're not perfect, we're never gonna be perfect. There are times that conversations do happen that divide us, but there's always someone in queue, there's always someone that's a steady hand, there's always someone that's a steady voice to say that no matter how divisive things may get, that we are still one in Leon County. And I believe that as long as that voice still is the reigning voice in our county, we will be one of the best counties in the state of Florida to live in. There's no, in my opinion, there's no mistake that Leon County is the capital county of the state of Florida. We set the example. We lead the way when it comes to how things are supposed to be done. And I expect, not just for our Commission to lead in that way, but I expect for our community to lead in that way, understanding the burden that we carry as being the state capital of the state of Florida. I wanted to, it's not in my notes, but I did want to thank our sister governments, the City of Tallahassee, the Leon County School Board, as they are very valuable to what we do. I also want to thank the Children's Services Council. They've come online, they've helped fund children's initiatives, and let it be no mistake that they are a solidified part of local government. They're not just a taxing authority, they're a part of local government that serves as, in my opinion, the expert when it comes to children and children's issues right here in Leon County, and they deserve that respect. So, I want to give them due thanks as an organization that helps with that. We do have Director Sika Green here with us today, Rose Green here with us today. But I will say that they, when it comes to education, there's nobody that does it better than Leon County schools. My have two daughters that are in Leon County schools today, wishing they weren't. One is at Rickers, the other one's at Fairview. I had a fight to get the Fairview one up this morning, but, Mr. Superintendent, you're doing an awesome job of leading our school district. I believe in your leadership, I appreciate you. I think more than ever, I believe our electors are starting to reach across the aisle and work together even more than ever, in my opinion. And I think some of it does help that we have electors in different parts of our governmental bodies and also work for government as well. And so, we have School Board Member Darryl Jones here, who is an advocate for his district and for the schools here as a whole. But when I say I want to thank my sister governments for being good, solid partners, Leon County, the City of Tallahassee, and Leon County School Board are a part of one elected team that's called Leon County that works very well to try to address the issues that we have here. And over time, it seems like sometimes we may operate in our own solos, but what I've seen happen over the years is that now we tend to reach across, we tend to try to work with each other, we tend to all try to be on the same page, and that's what it's all about, and I think it's making us a better overall city, county, and school board as a whole, so I appreciate that as well. I think it's no mistake that our next Chair, in my opinion, if I had anything to say about it, will be Commissioner Carolyn Cummings. She's been an awesome Vice Chair. She believes in being on time anytime. Yes, yes, yes. She's a terrific Vice Chair. I tell you, if I am half a second late for a meeting, the meeting has started. And those who know me know I can run a few minutes behind, but she does not hesitate at all to grab that gavel and start a meeting, and so I look forward to your leadership, your steady leadership. And I think, more than anything, I think we have to recognize here that not only is she one of the few African-American women that would be named as Chair of this county commission, but I don't think it's a time in history that we've had a black woman serve as both blueprint and county commission chair at the same time. Very deserving. Very deserving is my Vice Chair Carolyn Cummings on being such, and if you guys do not make her Chairman, we won't have the rest of the ceremony. I did want to take the opportunity, as they say where I'm from, to be some furniture moving up ahead. And I did see Chairman Emeritus, I would like to say, of the Big Ben Minority Chamber, Sean Pittman, walking here a second ago. He over there in the corner. Wanted to recognize him for being here today. Again, thank you for, ah, Judge Marsh is here with us today. Judge Marsh, where you at? There he is. Hey, Judge, how you doing? Never misrecognizing a judge, you never know you might be in front of him. Again, thank you all for the opportunity to serve as your Chair. I look forward to your leadership, Madam Vice Chair. I look forward to continuing to serve with you all as Commissioners. And now, I will hand it over to our Clerk to conduct the reorganization board vote. Madam Clerk?
First.
Good afternoon.
Deputy Court Administrator, Court Administrator, I mean, I'm saying Court, County Administrator, Deputy and County Administrator, sorry about that, County Attorney, and respective members of the public, I have the honor and pleasure of conducting the reorganization of the Board of County Commission for Leon County 2024. Do I have a motion to nominate a Chairman? Commissioner O'Keefe.
I move to nominate Commissioner Cummings as the Chair.
Commissioner Cummings is nominated. Do we have any further nominations? If not, nominations are closed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Congratulations on your new role, Madam Chairman. Do I have a motion to nominate a Vice Chair? Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Madam Marshall Knight. I'd like to nominate Commissioner Brian Welch to be our Vice Chair for Leon County.
I'll second.
Are there any further nominations? If not, nominations are closed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Congratulations, Commissioner Welch, as well as on your new role as Vice Chair. I would ask that this time is Commissioner Cummings, and your witness will join me at the plank room. Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
I'll ask if you raise your right hand, your left hand. And when I say aye, state your name and repeat after me. Aye?
Aye, Carolyn Cummings.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of Chairman.
Of Chairman.
Of the Leon County.
Of the Leon County.
Board of County Commissioners.
Board of County Commissioners.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Good afternoon, everyone. To all my friends, family, and supporters, I'm just grateful for your presence here. I'm grateful for all of my fellow county commissioners that are here, and I certainly praise God from whom all blessings flow. I want to certainly thank my fellow county commissioners for their vote of confidence and support in electing me as the Chair of this august body. They've done so for the next fiscal year. So, I want to start by thanking our county administrator, and I said the greatest county administrator on planet Earth, and many of you might not know, but he actually has that official distinction, having been recognized as the best county administrator in the world last year at a ceremony. But I certainly thank him and our county attorney, Attorney Chastity Osteen, and all of the great individuals, staff, that worked for Leon County. They are just a great team, and they provide great support for this body. I recognize that I sit here today on the shoulders of many past and present great elected leaders, Leon County, like Ms. Anita Davis, Dr. Henry Lewis, Ms. Mary Ann Lynden, and just so many others, we could go down the list. Many might be in the audience today, I'm not sure, but it's too numerous to name, however... be in the audience today, I'm not sure. But it's too numerous to name, however, I've learned from the history and the public service from all of those that have come before me. But also allow me to say that I'm just grateful and humbled to follow in those giant footsteps. And I recognize that they have paved the way for me to not only sit on this dais, but today to become the chairperson of this dais for the next year. Sitting here today among my fellow county commissioners as the only female here, among my male counterparts, and also as the only minority female among my great counterparts. It's just a living testimony and a living testament to the growth and inclusivity that we have witnessed here in this great county, Leon County, and in our great city of Tallahassee. So today, after I have served for almost three years as a county commissioner, I'm armed with a little bit more experience, a little bit more knowledge and wisdom, and I promise to continue to advocate for the health, safety, and welfare of every citizen in Leon County, regardless of age, race, creed, color, national origin. We sit here to represent all of the people. I promise to continue to advocate for citizens from all walks of life, so that they can attain a living wage for their families and for themselves. I promise to continue to advocate for security, our natural security of all of our citizens, for healthcare, affordable healthcare, for housing, affordable housing, for all of our veterans, our marginalized citizens, and I will continue to advocate for a vibrant economy. We will continue to push to cultivate economic development and create jobs that will pay a livable wage. I promise to support and advocate for a supportive environment where we have great growth and development in our county. I will advocate and support for the protection of our children and our youth, to end gun violence that continues to snatch far too soon the lives of our children. And the list goes on. We will continue to do the best and do what is best for the overall county and citizens in Leon County. So friends, as we celebrate the bicentennial 2024, I will hold up the banner for Leon County, and I will continue to say that this is the best place in the world to raise our children. And to do that, we have to be equipped to make sure Leon County is a safe place for all of us to live. So you can count on me as your Chair of the County Commission, to be the biggest advocate for Leon County. So thank you. I love you all. I appreciate everybody that is here. May God bless each of you. Thank you. If I may, I'd like to take upon a privilege, Mr. County Administrator, to say again how appreciative I am, how appreciative I am to have the presence and support of all of you that are here today. It just warms my heart. I'd like to recognize my family that are here, my two sisters, my nephew, who is my godson, if you all would just stand. I've got two godsons that are out there. Thank you all so much. I'd like to certainly recognize all of my sorority sisters that are here in red, the sisters in red, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. If you all would stand and be recognized, please. I am also elated and like to recognize all of my sisters from the National Association of University Women who have come to join me today as well. If we can give them a round of applause. Oh, awesome. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. I would be remiss also if I didn't thank my faith-based community, my church members. I appreciate all the three chambers, Mr. Jefferson, Dick, and I'm sure there are probably others I can't, I don't see, but we appreciate the chambers, we appreciate the Children's Services Council, and our Chairperson of the Director of the Children's Services is here, Ms. Sika Green, who's on a great job providing funding for our children in our community. All of you are so important, and you're important to this commission. And I'll reiterate what our outgoing Chairperson indicated is that we work together. We have a great relationship with our city counterparts, and I know our city commissioners that are here have been recognized, but we appreciate the fact that we work together, we work with other groups, we work with our chambers to do the work that needs to be done so that Leon County, Tallahassee, can become and continue to maintain the status of being a great, vibrant community and a great place to raise our children. So in that vein, and I know my remarks were supposed to be limited, but it's just so much that we can say about the good work that's being done by this board and collectively by all of you and all of the groups that make up Leon County and Tallahassee. So thank you all. Thank you all again. I appreciate the support that I've gotten over the years, and I look forward to the support that we will receive from all of our citizens in the coming year. So thanks again. And now we are at the close of our reorganization program. I'm going to ask the best associate pastor on planet Earth, Reverend Richard Mashburn, if he will come to the podium and do a closing prayer, after which I will ask you all to please remain seated for further instructions. Reverend Mashburn?
It is indeed an honor for me to hold up the arms of our dear pastor who could not be with us today. Let us bow our heads and our hearts. Oh Lord, our Lord, how excellent is our name in all the earth. You alone have established governments among mankind, and there is no authority except from you, for truly the government is upon your shoulders. Bless the new Chair Lady with wisdom and knowledge from above, strengthen the entire commission that they will do your perfect will. Let us strive for fairness in the distribution of resources which you have provided, oh Jehovah Jireh. We thank you. Prick the hearts of those who are called by your name, that they may show compassion for the least and the last among your people. We pray that no district will be left behind. Let justice and fairness run down like waters and righteousness as a mighty stream. Father God, we will be so careful to give you all the honor and the glory, for the great things you have done. In our Lord Jesus' name we pray and ask these blessings, and for his sake, we ask them all. Amen?
Amen.
And amen. God bless you.
Thank you, Reverend Mashburn, for that very moving and appropriate prayer. What we have prepared for our guests is a reception in the hall, so we invite all of you to please partake of the reception that has been prepared. I will ask members of the board to join down front for our official picture, and we will... Thank you for your indulgence. We are trying to determine a good time to come back and to take pictures as well. So I will ask members of the commission to reconvene promptly at 4:15, at which time we will begin our business of today. And so all of you, we appreciate you. Thank you for coming. Enjoy the food. And I'd like to just recognize one other individual who is here, who is just very significant in organizing today's activities, and that's my Chief of Staff, who's standing in the back, Charlesie Haines. So thank you, Charlesie, for all you've done, and he will direct the traffic out in the hall. And please enjoy the reception, and thanks again. Meeting adjourned. Meeting adjourned. Meeting adjourned.
Good afternoon. I'd like to call this meeting to order November 14, 2023 at 4:15 PM. Mr. County Administrator, do we have any speakers on non-agenda items?
Madam Chair, first, I believe we'll go to awards and presentations. And I think first up, we've got Commissioner Caban with a proclamation recognizing the Boys and Girls Club of the Big Bend, CEO President K.C. Dennis for its Fort Braden Community After School Program.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Commissioner Caban.
Madam Chair, may I? Whereas the Boys and Girls Club of the Big Bend's mission is to inspire and enable all young people, especially those who need us most, to reach their full potential as productive, caring, and responsible citizens. And whereas since 1992, the Boys and Girls Club has strived to meet the needs and interests of youth by providing high-quality after-school and summer programming in the Big Bend area. And whereas the Boys and Girls Club of the Big Bend receives summer funding through the CSC Summer Funding Initiative. And whereas the Boys and Girls Club of the Big Bend hosted a summer camp for Summer 2023 at the Fort Braden Community Center and hosted 60 kids from ages 5 to 12, Monday through Friday. And whereas the summer program was so successful that the county will continue to partner with the Boys and Girls Club of the Big Bend to offer after-school programming for the 2023 and 2024 school year at the Fort Braden Community Center. And whereas the after-school program runs Monday through Friday from 3:00 PM to 6:30 PM and currently has about 60 kids enrolled. And whereas the after-school program focuses on five core program areas: career and academics, healthy living, character and leadership, sports, fitness and recreation, and the arts. Whereas students have the opportunity to receive mentoring and enjoy the Fort Braden Library Playground, walking trail, workout equipment, story walk, and community garden. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, that we honor and express our appreciation and gratitude to the Boys and Girls Club of the Big Bend and K.C. Dennis for the commitment serving our Fort Braden community, children and families through the establishment of our after-school program. The club generates positive outcomes for youth, including improved academic performance, school attendance, classroom behavior, health and nutrition. They did this 14th day of November, 2023, signed the Board of County Commissioners and the County Administrator. Before I pass it to K.C., I just want to say how impactful that this program truly is to folks in our community out in Fort Braden. There are a lot of families, there's a gap between school ending and folks getting home from 5 o'clock. So having this aftercare program truly helps families, single parents, and those that are everyday working people. So I truly appreciate it. K.C., thank you.
Thank you. I definitely want to first thank the Board of County Commissioners for this proclamation. I am really excited for our organization and especially our Fort Braden Club. Definitely want to also thank the citizens of our great community for voting for the CSC Leon. This is our thing and work. This is the CSC and how it really supposed to work, guys. So I just want to say thank you. SICA and the process has been so smooth. Just really excited for the future, and I just want to say thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. President Dennis. Any Commissioners have any comments?
Thank you, and we certainly recognize the Boys and Girls Club. It has been a staple in our community for years. You have just, the organization has done a great job in instilling self-esteem, leadership ability, and just all-around great organization with a great president, great Board of Directors. And so we appreciate all that you do for our boys and girls. So continue to do the work, and we certainly promote the partnership with the Children's Services Council as well. Congratulations, thank you.
The age range. Mr. President, what is the age range of the children with the club? Awesome, thank you. Thank you all so much. Next, we will have acceptance of a $100,000 donation from the Friends of the Leon County Public Laboratory. Will those presenters please come forward to the podium?
Commissioners, my name is Lisa Harvey. I'm president of Friends of the Leroy Collins Leon County Public Library. With me today is Morgan Evers, who is our treasurer, and Pamela Monroe, the director of the library, of course. We bring this check to you as representing those donations made by our time, talents, and money from our 13 Board of Directors, our 300 members, and thousands of donations of books and money from the community. The majority of this money came from the sale of used books. And we are glad to be able to donate this to the library today. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I'm going to ask our County Administrator. Thank you so much. I'm going to ask, is there any comments or remarks, Ms. Monroe?
First of all, thank you very much, Friends of the Library. And if any of you would like to be Friends of the Library, please come to our website because we appreciate them so much. These funds go to a lot of the things that we are also doing with the library. We have the literacy contract, so it helps with summer reading. We have things that we are doing, for example, out at NEB, and I'm not going to spoil it for you, it's going to be fantastic. But the Friends are great friends to us, and we appreciate all that you do. So thank you, Lisa and Morgan, for representing such a wonderful group.
Thank you all so much. Next, we will have a presentation of the Tallahassee Leon County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls Annual Report. Ms. Stephanie Schumate? Absolutely.
Thank you all so much, Madam Chair, Commissioners, and staff for having us here today. My name is Stephanie Schumate, and I'm director for this amazing organization. And I am here with one of our wonderful Commissioners, Bernice McMillan. But I'd also like to take a second to recognize some of our other Commissioners of our 21-appointed Board that showed up today. So we have Commissioner Morgan Danny Burton, and our surrogate Commissioner Noodle, and Commissioner Carlo McClellan, Commissioner Renee Williams, and we both had Commissioner Dana Brooks and Commissioner Dr. Michelle Gale, who is off to another important reorg meeting as well. So we appreciate their support today. So I'm going to turn it over to Bernice to talk a little bit about what happened in our first year of the 2.0 plan, which we were so graciously proud and excited to enter into last year with the support of the county and the city of the expansion with the Tallahassee Leon County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. So I'm going to turn it over to Bernice, and we'll kind of tag-team this. And we know that time is of the essence. So if we're talking fast, or you tell us to like, just, you know, give us the look and we'll head on. So I'll give it over to Bernice.
Absolutely. Good afternoon, esteemed Madam Chair, County Commissioners, County officials, and everyone in their respected and respective roles. As Stephanie mentioned, I'm Bernice McMillan. This is my third year serving on the commission, and I'm currently the Chair of the Violence and Safety Committee. This is my second time actually chairing that particular committee. I'm a training manager for the Division of Work for Services to Florida Commerce. I am the founder of Divine Revelations Ministries Incorporated, Vice President of the Board of Directors for NAMI Tallahassee, and the Secretary for TPD's Citizens Advisory Council. But today, I have on my CSWG hat and truly am honored and pleased to co-present the 2022-2023 CSWG Annual Report. The CSWG theme for 2022 through 2023 was women and girls at the intersections, amplifying their voices, centering their experiences, and creating space for meaningful change. Our leadership team included Chair Dr. Cicely Brantley and Vice Chair Dr. Jean O'Conne and various community members that, community chairs, excuse, committee chairs, excuse me. And some of the highlights included expanding our staffing, which of course we hired Stephanie as our full-time director, who just celebrated one year at the end of October. And in August, we hired a new part-time program assistant, Amanda Hernandez, a graduate student at FSU's College of Social Work. And we also have interns that we are so grateful for who help us to succeed in our work. We worked with a consultant to host an action planning retreat with an ad hoc action planning committee consisting of current Commissioners, Oasis staff, and former Commissioners in July. I, of course, was a member of that ad hoc committee and was truly blessed to participate in that planning session. The planning retreat- The planning retreat, which resulted in a written two-year plan to guide the work of the CSWG through the years 24, 25. Our six standing committees include the Economic Security, Education, Employment and Earnings, Health and Development, Political Equity, and Violence and Safety, who diligently reviewed the recommendations, which included 142, yes, that is correct, 142 recommendations were made over the years to the city and county. They pertain to each of our focus areas, and we categorize the recommendations in the following ways. Overall goals or ideas for the full CSWG Commission, goals and ideas for specific committees, updated potential policy recommendations to present to the city and Leon County Commissions. You will hear about a few of these policy recommendations shortly from Director Schumate. One of the most beneficial things that the CSWG 2.0 plan charged us to do was to expand membership of our committees, which included committee, community committee members. We had over 45 community committee members join one of our six standing committees, and just being six weeks into the new program, we've had, this year's new program, we've had another 10 community members express or join already. We have representatives from so many different organizations, but just to name a few, Survive and Thrive Advocacy Center, NAMI Tallahassee, Refuge House, the Domestic Violence Coordinating Council, Tallahassee Police Department, Leon County Sheriff's Office, and so many, many more. And we are truly grateful for their time and dedication for serving with us on our various committees. We hosted community-wide connection events for women working in organizations whose mission includes serving women and girls. We held an event in quarter two, three, and four. Almost 60 different organizations and 126 people attended one or more of these events in the past year. We created a collaborative women and girls serving organization database, which consists of 143 contacts for organizations and individuals that provide direct services or information that pertain to women and girls' issues and concerns, and that list is consistently growing. We hosted five issue-specific roundtables, dashboard indicator feedback events, or general CSWG awareness events as well. We had over 25 different organizations and over 50 different people attend one or more of these events. The CSWG, led by an ad hoc dashboard committee, is working with the Askew School of Public Administration and Policy at Florida State University and a web development data science company to complete our dashboard. We are in the process of finalizing the RFP to secure the web development data science company. The dashboard will launch prior to the conclusion of fiscal year 23, 24. It will be the first of its kind to measure the well-being of women and girls on a local level. We are very excited about being a trailblazer on this initiative for our state and also our nation. Each of CSWG's six committees have identified indicators that highlight the wellness of women and girls in their area of concentration, and we're currently refining and finalizing them. We published the Tallahassee Leon County Women and Girls Community Calendar on our CSWG website in June of 2023. This calendar is updated daily with events related to women and girls. We also have a submission form where organizations and nonprofits can directly submit their information. This past year, we accomplished so many, many things, and we are excited and looking forward to year two of CSWG 2.0. And I'm going to high-five and pass it on back to Stephanie.
Awesome, thank you so much, Commissioner McMillan. Yes, that was a lot and a little bit of time. Also, two baby Commissioners were born during this time, from Commissioner Bryant, Dr. Bryant, and myself. So we have two babies in the picture as well, which are both awesome female rock stars. So we're excited to have them onboard. But headed into the new year, we also are charged, and Bernice, our Commissioner McMillan talked a little bit about this, the previous 142 policy recommendations that came forward over the years, some being true policy recommendations that the city and the county have worked on, some more actually as goals for the CSWG or goals specific to the committees. So we've just thrown in here a couple of ones that we're narrowing down and wanting to finalize as true policy recommendations coming back that the city and the county can actually put forth instead of like, create a continuum of care with great organizations in our community. We are doing that. We know that's not something that's a true policy recommendation, but we can handle that on our end. So some of these consist, for the city of Tallahassee and Leon County, because we're a joint board, to publicize that community calendar on websites, social media platforms, and other public forms of communication. It was charged with us in that 2.0 plan. We, it's a very robust calendar, living and breathing, updated daily, as Commissioner McMillan said, and we'd love to see that go further into the community on your behalf and the city's behalf. Also, to promote and encourage, one of the things that came out of the Violence and Safety Committee is a free bystander intervention training to promote it and encourage it, and to hopefully track the completion of staff, volunteers, or any awarded contractors. And it is a great online resource. Actually, they offer it all the time. We'd love to work with staff on that a little bit more, but that is something we do believe with the Violence and Safety Committee can truly make an impact if our county officials and our city officials can start to take place of those trainings. Also, with the city and the county, to become Stack Pro certified, city and the county has provided funding for that Stack Pro training and its inception and creation, and we would love to see the Stack Pro certification happen in each of the Commissioners' office. I know Commissioner Miner's office is a Stack Pro certified. The Commission actually became a Stack Pro certified business as well. Oasis Center for Women and Girls is also Stack Pro certified. It is an hour-long training. It's very easy and accessible, but it's a wonderful training that we really think would be beneficial for all city and county elected official offices to become certified in. The other thing is, it's kind of, that came out of our Political Equity Committee, is to start to gather gender data for speaker cards for the meetings. And this ties directly back to this dashboard of well-being that we're going to be talking about and creating when we look at political equity and citizen involvement and service into the community. One of the ones that has done, the county, I know already does this within libraries and different community centers, so we're already on the right track there, but all the public buildings and spaces provide free feminine hygiene supplies and continue to work in collaboration with the organizations that are already doing that work to help in period poverty in our community. So those are a couple that are a little more finalized, that came from reviewing and narrowing down those 142, and that's where we're looking at having your help and assistance in accomplishing those this year. This coming year, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner McMillan in just a second. These are our two amazing Commissioners, Chair Gadini and Vice Chair Bryant. They are both away on amazing conferences presenting in their realms of work today is why they're not here. But the Chair has chosen Embracing Gender Equity for an Inclusive Tomorrow for the theme this year, and Commissioner McMillan will give a little bit more insight on that, and you can also read that as well.
Absolutely. Building upon this year's theme, Chair Gadini has empowered the Commission to recognize our own cognitive biases, such as optimistic and confirmation biases, employ groupthink or exploring varying perspectives, ensure data-driven decisions are made in all of our planning, self-check what we are bringing to the table and accountability towards those particular outcomes that we're looking to achieve. This one I really like, leave no one behind, and she really talked about going from diapers to diapers. So that is inclusive of every, every woman and little girl, and encompass the full lifespan of women and girls in our community with every single thing that we consider. So that leads us to what's on the horizon. So continuing to build on the CSWG 2.0 plan, our top priorities for 2023, 2024 include, but are not limited to, nope, the planning for the Empowerment Summit and for women and girls. This is exciting. We've been working on this for quite a while, going back with my service within the three years, so we're excited to be able to implement that this Commission year. So that is a community-wide, open-to-the-community event that is designed specifically and for women and girls, just to empower them, to embrace them, to just allow them to feel beauty, to feel that they can succeed, resilience, et cetera. Thank you.
So on that Empowerment Summit, you know, with the women and girls perspective, all right, thank you, got that nod. All right, we're going to be developing this digital dashboard, which is one of the big, the summit and the digital dashboard, and I'll let you all continue. You have amazing eyes and brains, you can read those last couple ones. But the digital dashboard, we're working with the Ruben Askew Public Policy Lab, and we're in the final stages of an RFP for a data science firm. And as Commissioner McMillan said in the opening statements, this will be the first of its kind to measure the well-being of women and girls in those six dimensions of our six standing committees, not only in our state but in our country of what that looks like. So we are in the home stretch of that, that will launch this program here, and we are really excited about that because it'll provide, you know, a view of what our community looks like on a scale of zero to 100 in every single area, and how we can hold ourselves accountable as the CSWG with the work we're doing, community organizations accountable, and our elected officials on the city and the county, and how we can work together to improve the lives of women and girls with that data dashboard. So those are the two really huge ones that we got going on, and just the continued ongoing work that our amazing Commissioners do. So that is, in a nutshell, a very quick nutshell of everything we have going on, but we would welcome any questions, comments, and we once again appreciate the support of the Commission over the years, and we look forward to the continued support this year. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Ms. McMillan and Ms. Schumate for that. Annual report, which is, each year, it surpasses the year before. Commissioners, Commissioner O'Keefe.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you both for this report. I want to recognize in addition to everyone you mentioned, your interns. I attended one of your discussion groups workshops on early learning, education access, and during the meeting, two folks that were there owned businesses that do early learning. And I'm stumbling over those words because they told me they prefer that to childcare since they're not just babysitting, they're educating. And it was your intern who, whether you told them to or not, but we'll just give them all the credit.
We did it.
Got the phone book out, or the Google, and called childcare, early learning providers, and that's how these folks found out about it, and they got connected with everybody else at the table, and it was just a great example of the work you do, bring people together to connect those things. So thank you and thank that intern.
We will thank Amy. She's graduating this semester and is an amazing, we are sad to lose her, but she's been wonderful. She was summer and this fall, so I will share those sentiments.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe, for those supportive remarks. Commissioner Miner is in the queue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank both of you and everyone from the Commission on all the work you do. I think you know my wife was a former Chair of the CSWG back in the day, and I had the fortune to marry a women's advocate, so it's a frequent, the status of women and girls is a frequent topic of conversation in our house for good reason. It's very important. And when I was at a previous CSWG board meeting, we talked about how the pandemic affected women, because rightly or wrongly, when, when our schools closed and our kids were back in our homes for days on end, more often than not, it was women who actually put their careers on pause to come and take care of the family at home. And I think it's taken a long time for women to regain the traction that they had from that disruption in their careers. So everything that you do is very important because it helps bring focus on that and on everything that we need to do to help women and girls in this county. So thanks to everything that you all do. I think you have a very supportive County Commission here that's willing to work with you and wants to see some improvement in the status of women and girls. Thanks very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I don't see anyone else in the queue, so thank you again, and I certainly reiterate Commissioner Miner's and Commissioner O'Keefe's comment. You all continue to do great work, and thank you for your time this afternoon.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. County Administrator, do we have citizens to be heard on consent and non-agenda items?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one speaker joining us by Zoom, Jaden Rollins.
Jaden Rollins, are you there? We can skip that one and come back, Mr. Administrator.
We sure will. Thank you, Madam Chair. Next up, on item number 20, again, we're on speakers to be heard on consent and non-agenda items, Stanley Sims.
Mr. Sims.
I want to just give a shout-out to the snack committee, because they did a good job today. Them was some good little tarts, and them little strawberry things. I ate about three of them. I really want to talk about the voluntary or involuntary of annexation of property into the city. And Commissioner Proctor, I do see validation in some of your concerns in this process if desired. But as I listen to you guys deliberate over this, I want you to also see that there's two dimensions to this problem. For instance, Commissioner Welch, it's not a problem of getting annexation on our side of the town, you know what I mean? But we also face the challenges that most people on the northeast side of town, if they're a single-family home or small plot of land, it's not really wanting that annexation because it comes with that excessive taxation. But then you have individuals like me that own a little piece of land off of Mickey and Cicky Road, that I get taxation without representation. It's a complex issue. Maybe not as complex on the northeast side of town, but when I'm on the south side of town and I need these services that comes with the municipality, i.e., depending upon my economic income into my home, it is more sensible to be on city utility, even though that's costing me more monthly, but down the road, I get more services. I've got three dead trees in my property right now that I cannot move off, but I pay city utilities. But if my property was inside of the city, I would be accessible to their programs. Annexation of property. Me personally, I have a level of distrust with the city Tallahassee Police Department, but they still can't arrest my black behind. That's, when we talk about annexation, we need to talk about what can we do so that the disparity of services is not so far apart, because a lot of Madam Chair of your county residents are also city customers, and that need to be a part of your dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sims.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes our speakers on this portion of the agenda.
Thank you. Mr. County Administrator, are there any agenda items?
Yes, from consent, agenda items 1, 7, 14, 15, and 22 by Commissioner Proctor.
1, 7, 14.
15 and 22.
15 and 22. I would like to entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda excluding items 1, 7, 14, 15, and 22.
So moved.
Thank you. It was moved, I believe, by- It was moved, I believe, by Commissioner Miners, second by, vice versa, moved by Commissioner O'Keefe, and second by Commissioner Miners. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposition? Hearing none. Those consent agenda items have been approved, Mr. County Administrator.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, item one is, are the minutes from your September 12th meeting happy to answer any questions you might have?
Hearing none. Commissioner Proctor, you pull consent agenda.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, good afternoon. Congratulations, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
You are very vibrant, and I don't know how you're going to top your introductory dress on your initial meeting tonight, but you showed pretty. I don't know what you're going to do next round.
Well, thank you.
You know, every round goes higher, and we'll be here watching. Commissioners, I've pulled this item, a number of things that I'm well pleased with. If you look at the matters captured, 1 through 35, 37, 8, I've counted about, and I've counted 13 hard indicators from our minutes that at the end of them, they say, subject to legal review by the county attorney. And I just want to say that I'm well pleased and delighted that our agreements captured 22, 23, 24, 5, 6, 8, 29, 30, 31, they all emphasize at the very end that these agreements and any amendments there are to, subject to legal review by the county attorney. I think that it's very important that legal review continues to be a part of our process, and respecting that is very significant. I won't be here forever, and I'm needing and desiring you commissioners to pick this stuff up and pay attention. So thank you very much for that. Other matters, item 14 speaks to a lease agreement between the Leon County Government Annex and through the General Services Administration. Is that the United States of America, does that mean like the federal government, Vince? On number 14, item 14 about the space agreement.
You on consent agenda item 14 that was pulled?
On number one.
Okay. You still on number one?
Yeah, item number one.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Proctor. Yes, please.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I can answer this question. So this is referring, it's on page 18 of the agenda materials. It is agenda item number 14, resolution to lease space at the Leon County Government Annex to the United States of America by and through the General Services Administration and a lease agreement. Yes, Commissioner Proctor, that is actually a new lease for an existing tenant that has been a tenant over at the annex for a number of years, but that old lease had expired, and we had to renegotiate with GSA for a new lease.
Super. Commissioners, what we have here, we have contact with the United States Government, Department of General Services. You've heard me emphasize again and again, properties called the U.S. National Forest are subject to and are waiting, are asking, and proposing a clear need for, that we have an agreement here dealing with property gives us an introductory thought, if we've never had one, of what's possible if we ask, if we seek, if we knock. We've got to ask, seek, and knock. And I continue to emphasize that precedent is established in working through agreements with the U.S. government. It's here, and the potential for what we can do to secure the use of lands they're using ours, can we use theirs? But we won't know, allen if we won't ask. And I'm asking us to keep, to grow up our imagination that we can ask the United States government. It helps citizens of Ukraine. The United States government helps the citizens of Israel. I can't understand why it won't help the citizens of Leon County as we're growing homelessness issues, mental health campus needs, detention facility. What precludes us from asking? Wanted to lift that point up. Additionally, today, over on page nine of 18, Commissioner Proctor expressed concern about coordination with communities in Georgia and inquired about the status of radio connectivity. He raised concerns, questions regarding the effectiveness and collaboration with neighboring communities, emphasizing the importance of communications and coordination across the regions during emergencies such as Hurricane Idylia. I wanted to add to that, to say that it was expressed in today's newspaper that the Biden administration, I believe on yesterday, announced that it is facilitating new frequencies, new bandwidth, and the expansion of bandwidth and access, and speaking of connectivity and communications, just seeing it this morning, I didn't know this before, I went back to thread a needle with what we've talked about previously, but Commissioners, I'd like to see our community included, and I don't know how, is there a lottery? Do you write a check for it? Does your, someone offered to fight somebody today in the U.S. Senate? Do we, Rick Scott fight somebody? I don't know, but I want some for our universities, for our MAG LAB, for our schools, and whatever else. But can we keep our eye on those new frequencies that will be allotted and placed out into our airspace?
Commissioner Proctor, do you want to make a motion to that effect? Would it be proper at this time, Madam County Administrator?
Madam Chair, the board could do so. Really, we're in the middle of an agenda item. You certainly could, or you could take it under discussion time for Commissioners, whichever.
It's your pleasure, Commissioner.
By the time we get there, I beat them forgot. Excuse, I am, I am social security eligible now, and please, if you allow me to make that now. Commissioners, I move, make motion that we advise our staff to secure further insight of how our community might access the frequencies that have been presented by the Biden administration, that communications and connectivity of North Florida and South Georgia area can be made tight and right. Motion.
And so that's for an agenda item to come back related to broadband?
Well, so for information for our.
Information.
Staff to, to follow up and stay in the loop. It's not on our, it's brand new stuff.
Thank you.
It's really hot. It's just fresh off the press.
I read that as well. Is there a second to the motion? Thank you, Commissioner Miners. Let me ask the County Administrator, is that, you understand?
Yes, we've got that.
Broadband? Absolutely. Thank you so much. All those in favor, let it be, I'm sorry, there's discussion.
Just real quick, Madam Chair. Drew, cool question. This agenda item would be for information-only purposes, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Right.
Thank you, ma'am.
And if we can apply whatever we got to do to get some, we want some, we do want some.
Right. Commissioner Maddox?
I'll just say aye.
Okay. Commissioner Caban?
Thank you. For point of clarification, are you referencing, you asked for information on property specifically where?
National Forest. My reference to the, for the National Forest in the south side on the east of Spring Hill Road.
Okay.
East of Spring Hill Road, coming all the way back around to Southwood is eligible. Another District Two doesn't desire to have any development in the National Forest. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
The motion on floors is in reference to broadband, not, not development of National Forest? Yes.
And that was just part of your discussion about?
The other part is part of discussion, this motion is just about broadband, right?
Broadband.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All the, any other discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Now, do you want to continue, Commissioner Proctor, as you, you were discussing federal properties?
No, I've made that.
You did. Okay, you made your point.
I wanted to emphasize that we do have relations in dealing with property. It's conceivable we can have additional relations. That's my point. Madam Chair, Commissioners, under the minutes captured, we ask for information to come back pertaining to legislation aimed at setting term limits for county commissioners. I'm not sure what that information, but on yesterday, day before yesterday or sometime, Senate Bill 438 is a, is public enemy number one. I would like to see, as Florida Association of Counties policy, legislative policy workshop begin tomorrow in Orlando, I'm sorry, in Tampa. I won't be in Tampa tomorrow, but I'm asking for this commission, given the immediate nature, not to the public per se, but beginning individually upon our individual careers and services as county commissioners. Senate Bill 435 is, seems to have a little more velocity than introduction of a measure last year. It seeks to, for persons who've served eight years, their names cannot appear on the next ballot. It appears that it would go, I imagine, as a referendum item, and so I wanted to update quickly. Attorney Osteen, I was not trying to get in front of you, but this is my job. So I was getting in front for myself, and I'd like to see a motion that we're able to have a resolution with the fact, and I've talked with Mr. Suggs this weekend, bumped into him twice, and told him that this is number one priority for me, and I'd love for us to have an agenda item if we can have unanimous, if we don't have unanimous concerns with that Senate Bill 438 that we oppose it. How do we handle that, Madam Attorney? The fact, conference is meeting tomorrow, this is something affecting this board and every board in 67 counties. If they need a little help about this, how do we convey that our board, the capital counties board, is disinterested in this proceeding to ballot in November?
Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
We can definitely contact FACT. I know their staff is actually already in Tampa preparing for the conference that starts tomorrow. I know that Commissioner Miners will be there. I don't know if this is already part of FACT's legislative agenda, I believe.
It is, and it's also part of the board's already adopted legislative priorities, but we, and we can help reinforce that in any other ways that the board deems appropriate, but we already have our people on it and with the kind of attention that you would want, Commissioner Proctor.
Awesome.
I've been, I've been to those meetings, and y'all know, like I know, some of these North Florida counties don't say a mumbling word. The meetings are dominated by some of the larger counties, and I don't think silence should be our strongest and clearest and best response on this issue. These people located across the street from us, they got a bazooka aimed directly at us across the street, and we're a very clear target, it's clear. So thank you, Vince, if we're able to convey and make clear, just because North Florida is quiet in these big meetings, we making noise about it.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. I think your point is well taken.
Didn't find.
In that respect, let me just direct you back, we were on, you had pulled consent agenda items 1, 7, 14, 15, 22. We had a motion for consent agenda item one, and your last comment was directed to, was it directed to any one of those items, consent agenda?
It was the fact that I had requested information.
Oh, from the minutes, I understand.
I'm still on the minute.
Okay.
But I wanted to update and say that FACT is meeting in the morning.
Oh, right.
And we ain't got the information back, but we still need to let them know. These people are anywhere.
Right.
Right around the corner. I think we meet one more time before these people take it up.
Uh, Commissioner Maddox?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Proctor, I plan to go to FACT this week, this week, and I will represent those words that you have spoken. I do know that Gavin and staff are working hard to make sure that home rule is protected, and when it comes to this issue, that we're able to make decisions on about how long our electors are able to serve, and that our citizens have a say. He did mention that if this does so happen to pass, that Florida Association of Counties itself may be looking to file suit against the state in order to make sure that our home rights are protected. So they are, they are having a conversation about trying to get in front of this, and they're also considering what to do if it does pass, but it has to pass in order for them to get to that point. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. We know that our voices will be heard. He's one of our past presidents of FACT, so we appreciate the fact that you will be there and express our sentiments and concern. Thank you. That's on consent agenda item one.
Very good. He, and he's very effective.
Oh, absolutely. Very well respected by FACT, so we appreciate that. So are we moving to number seven, our Commissioner? Are we still on one?
Still on one. I see the Sewer Services for the South Side comes back to us and as a number, geez, 22, I think I pulled it, it was, it was a report, a status report item, but I'll pull that out, I'll talk about what I had in mind on that. And then Commissioner Caban, Madam Chair, talked about something which I believe is, we'll look at in number 15, but on page 17 of 18, Commissioner Caban asked the county administrator for clarification regarding the upcoming blueprint agenda item focused on the Airport Gateway Project, specifically requested to include Spring Hill Road as a viable option, and emphasized that it's not too late to pivot and consider this alternative for the project. I believe that item 15 today talks in part to Spring Hill Road, but it's merely for us to agree to pay a share of the cost to replace a bridge, and the county administrator clarified that Spring Hill Road was initially conceived as one of the original options for the Airport Gateway Project. Commissioner Proctor requested clarity from Florida State University regarding its position on the Airport Gateway Project, and on and on. This underscores the significant dysfunction, which I'll get a chance to talk about a little later, that we brought back this issue to our board, we've talked about it, and then we go back across the street to get with our colleagues, and we get there, and we're told that that's not the place to bring it up, to talk about it, we have to come back to our individual board again. This little caption note undergirds the difficulty of our understanding, and we get to agenda item number 24. Agenda item 24 is this book right here, this book right here. So staff takes us all the way back to the history of this, and there is a picture that shows who and where our placement of blueprint has been located, and how it's fallen from that place to the description of its functions and processing now. This needed to be pointed out. I wanted to show that, that Commissioner Caban had asked, and we had done those things. Those things being said, I'm through with that item, but those were points that reviewing my homework, our homework, those points caught me, Madam Chair. I like the move number seven.
Is there a second?
I need to adopt it, move. Madam Chair, I motion for our adoption of agenda item number one.
Thank you. It's been moved and. It's been moved to in second. Is there any comments by any commissioners? All those, in favor, let it be known by saying aye. This consent agenda item number 1. Continue, Commissioner.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I ain't trying to keep this thing long, but it broke my heart to see a headline story that people are detained in our community, and women are given molded food in jail, rat droppings on top of food, pictures in the newspaper, and a surprise visit inspection of the Women's Federal Correction Institute finds that they are being mistreated. That's wrong. Molded food, dirty place, that's wrong. I pulled this item because this grant that our Leon County Sheriff is receiving is for body cameras to pay for the reentry programs and to purchase forensic tools. But one thing I want to give a shout out to is that our jail is not the hideous monster that the Federal Corrections Institute is documenting and with no mandate to clean it up. But I just want to say that the number of times I have been through toward Leon County's jail, as well as, I don't even know how many years I've chaired the Public Safety Council, which has an oversight to focus on jail population reduction, but we, I have never heard of or seen what was on the front page of yesterday's paper. So I want to give a shout out to Leon County detention for keeping a place that ain't like another place in the same county. And I just believe, Madam Chair, I would nudge the chair to write a good letter, how disappointed we are. And I don't know whose daughters they are, but in Leon County, we, we want better. And if you, Madam Chair, would represent our board, I wanted to encourage you to, to do that. It was, it was, it was, but you're a lawyer, you know, but, but it violates the Eighth Amendment. That's what it does. All right. I move adoption of Agenda Item 7.
Thank you, is there any further discussion? Thank you. We appreciate you, Commissioner Proctor, for raising those items. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Commissioner Proctor?
Thank you. On this amendment to an interlocal agreement between the City of Tallahassee and Leon County to manage and control illicit discharges to the Leon County Municipal Storm Sewer Systems, Mr. Administrator, could you tell us a little bit what, what this is and are we, what this mean?
Sure, absolutely. Madam Chair, Commissioners, I'd like to ask Anna Padilla to get up, but essentially, this is all part of our NPDS permit, which the federal guidelines require us to, to do certain things and to coordinate with our municipal partners who, who are responsible for these functions, but I'll ask Anna to elaborate just a little bit more on that.
Anna, what we saw a couple of months, a month, month and a half ago, city spilled over a million gallons of sewer out there on Capital Circle and somewhere between Mikkasuki, and that area is still growing. What is a substantial spill? What's a modest spill? When, at what threshold, how many gallons is the city required to report to its designated environmental oversight source? I'm concerned, and look like we're blindfolded in something that I couldn't recognize our role except to pay some money, so that's why I pulled this.
Yeah, so the, the thresholds for a small spill versus a larger spill are set by DEP. City of Tallahassee reports a spill of any size, whether it's a one gallon jug that dumps out on the ground of gasoline, they report that to DEP. Anything that's discharged into our pipes or our ditches is investigated, no matter how big it is, by the city, and that's done through this contract. The contract is so that we can meet the requirements of the permit, and it's a cost savings because they are already doing that. It would be more expensive if we were to do it ourselves.
So we're mandated to participate and pay our share to the city for sewer?
We are mandated to investigate any illicit discharges. We choose to do that by contracting through the city for them to do the investigation.
So the city spills it, and they're, they're own judge, they're, they have their own jury, they have their own trier of facts?
It's more than just spills by the city. We've had spills that are by contractors, by property owners, by the city, by other organizations, so it's more than just city spills.
But the city is the major conveyor of sewer through our community. It's certainly a million gallon spill, and we have this contract, but the city, we pay them to self-investigate. That's what you're saying?
We pay them to investigate any spill.
Okay, very good. I was confused by this. I didn't understand why we're forced to pay perpetrator to investigate what happened. I'm also bothered that we pay, and the citizens of District 1 pay for sewer spills to investigate them, and we really have no pipes. We don't have the sewer pipes. But we are paying for those who do, and for the spills to be investigated by others that ain't ours. And there is no mitigating process to alleviate our taxes, no mitigating process to equal the actual service that we do. We're paying, we're paying it all. We don't have the pipes, and this makes me very uncomfortable. So, Madam Chair, I'm, I'm not of a cognitive posture to make a motion for this. I can't support it. My people are paying for a service they don't get, and I'm appreciative of staff presenting the item.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Do you have any follow-up, Mr. County Administrator, on that item, is presented as is? Okay. Any other comments on, Commissioner O'Keefe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. These are good questions. I appreciate it, Commissioner Proctor. Either be for County Administrator or for, for you to answer. Can you confirm that our, the spill we learned about in the news that is considered major, that is above the threshold between small and major spill?
Sorry, could you repeat that?
Sure. The, the big spill we read about in the news, was that well, or is that over the threshold to make it a significant or large spill?
I'm not sure what the threshold is off the top of my head, but that was definitely a major spill.
Okay. And then the investigation that the city does, if it's off and on itself, I'm imagining, and you can just, sorry, this is a question and form of statement. You can tell me if I'm wrong or not. It involves some water sampling and then sending that off to labs, and those labs at least are independent of the city? And do, does our staff, if that's the case, does our staff ever look at those lab reports when we get results of the investigations on spills by the city?
The city uses their own lab. They, it's the same lab that they use to test all the water at the wastewater treatment facility. It is a DEP-regulated laboratory, so the DEP does random audits of the lab, and we do get the results back, and we do look at those.
Thank you. When you're talking about DEP, you're talking about Florida DEP.
Correct.
Perfect. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Is there any other comments from Commissioners on item?
Madam Chair, my, is there a utility, Citizens Utility Oversight Board from the city?
That I do not know.
Aren't you aware of a utility, Citizens Utility Board?
I just don't have that specifics on that information.
Okay.
Not aware.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I would like to now entertain a motion to accept Consent Agenda Item number 14. Uh, move by Commissioner Welch. Is there a second? Commissioner Minor? Any further discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any objections?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Proctor?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Consent up, yes, 15.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Caban specifically requested to include Spring Hill Road as a viable option and emphasized that it's not too late to pivot and consider this alternative for the project. County Administrator Long clarified that Spring Hill Road was initially conceived as one of the original options for the Airport Gateway Project. I pulled this item to speak to why is we designing a four-lane bridge? And that four-lane bridge accommodates a two-lane road? And I think this ask from Commissioner Caban about that four-lane road, there's no clarity about when that's going to happen. I believe in item coming up in a minute. There were two things specifically here that I disagreed with, Madam Chair. The resolution on the third whereas clause, page 1 of 2, attachment 2, whereas it said, whereas completion of the project is in the interest of the department and the county as a project will substantially improve the safety, operation, and efficiency of Spring Hill Road. That, that's a little problematic to me. Our notes cite that this road will be 50.5 feet. It leaves the safety to me. It leaves the safety and the efficiency of Spring Hill Road is vastly the same. This is not a substantial improvement to the safety and operation and efficiency of a road a mile long. 50 feet is not a substantial improvement. That's, it's just not accurate. I'm concerned because as we try to talk about Spring Hill Road, we were blocked from the meeting that would allow a congruency of a widened road of four lanes to fit with this particular project of a four-lane bridge. We're not going to take a, build a boat dock on a golf course, would we? No? But we're going to build a four-lane road, I mean, four-lane bridge that ain't got that road. And to the extent that we desire to discuss this project, which is shut down in every kind of way, and it is truly frustrating. This is a fascinating theme, and it seems, Mr. Administrator, that our notes tell us that on November 22 of 2022, we have paid 279,000 that is already transferred to FDOT under the original LFA, and we've been fully reimbursed by Blueprint as part of the Airport Gateway Project. We've been told that there's 25 million. We saw some other numbers suggested to us under our legislative that there's 56 million. The Blueprint Board has something like 84 million, projected up to maybe 122, 121 million. And Spring Hill Road don't have a standstill number. It, it don't have a standstill number. And I realize that some of this is coupled with right-of-way and then construction, but there are four distinct numbers associated with Spring Hill, and there is no specific date. And the project currently has approximately 25.3 million available for the reimbursement to Leon County. This is amazing because I thought it was more money than 25 million. I don't know if games are being played, but it's just plain time that we figure out some kind of way that we can get a discussion and a talk about o-laning this road, but we're being shut down. I believe that we only owe County Administrator Long, we don't owe these people, DOT, 279. My calculation is that we owe them 119, 118, 119,000, 118. That's what we owe them. We're paying them too much because we done already paid them an initial amount of 279. And they went up on the price, the 1.5, which we only owe a fourth, one-fourth. So I'm, I'm, I don't understand these numbers. It ain't working for me. Those are my comments, and.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Proctor.
I'm grateful for the opportunity.
Let me allow the County Administrator to address your concerns on item 14.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
15.
15, I'm sorry, 15.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, I'm, I'm not sure the source of the confusion, but let me be very clear. There was, there was a motion made by the IA at the last meeting for this item to come back to you, in explicit detail for the board to evaluate the current design of, of the Airport Gateway Project, including Spring Hill Road. There is significant funding and project timelines associated with that project, which have presented, been presented to the IA. Significant funding already dedicated to Spring Hill Road, I think upwards of over $40 million in its current design, and the board, again, at your next meeting, will have the opportunity, should you make that determination as an IA, to reprogram those dollars however you see fit. So that will be coming back to the board based on your motion of just November 17th at your last meeting, and we look forward to having all the information that you might need before you at that time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Commissioner Proctor, do you have any other comments, or any other board members on Consent Agenda Item number 15?
Madam Chair, I move, I move this with those reservations which I've stated, but I move this item.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. Consent Agenda Item 15 passes. Commissioner Proctor?
Madam Chair, thank you so much. The target areas identified in the plan are included in the capacity analysis, ensuring that conveyance and treatment capacity are available if new systems are constructed. Good. The city updates the master sewer plan every five years and includes the target areas identified by the county at that time. This is a 2040 master sewer plan. Mr. Administrator, I know that we have areas that we have so designated, including, as you've shared, our South Side Triangle Utility Expansion Project. And to see that on October of '26 and '20 and '22, the City Commission did approve the $20 million. What's missing here, in my reading, is a specific date to start, specific, we got a general map, but 2040 is a long time to me, and I'm pondering, and I appreciate the item coming back, but I am looking for a work plan, I'm looking for a start date, I'm looking for completion, and that part right there is plain missing.
Uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Proctor, just let me get clarification. What consent agenda item are you?
22, the.
Okay, 22 is general business. Do we have 22? Am I on the right one?
It's under state support.
Under consent.
Okay.
But, but Madam Chair, I was just going to say, we've got Anna Padilla back to the podium. Happy to answer any questions you might have. I think you might have caught that, Anna, in case you need any clarification.
Maybe, yeah, I think so.
Um, if you look at the top of page three of the item, and I, I believe we're talking about the timeline of the South Side Sewer, um, the top of page three outlines when, um, the timeline of that, so they are in the conceptual design right now. Um, once that's done, they'll work on the easements, right-of-way acquisition and easements and the final design at the same time, which will take approximately, um, two years. So, you're looking at spring of twenty-twenty-six for the completion of that, and then construction would start at that time.
Okay, in that triangle?
That's correct.
In that triangle. So, we were over on, um, what the, what the street was the other day we did, that house? Uh, what street was it? Ballard?
Balkin', Balkin'.
Balkin', Balkin'. It was over on Balkin' Road, and Balkin' Road is inside of the Urban Services area. Balkin' Road is surrounded by hundreds of homes. This is, does not include Balkin' Road area, uh, Crawfville, between Crawfville and Spring Hill Road?
No, I, that would be outside the triangle, I believe.
Okay. The triangle, um, is too small. Um, there, there are twice as many homes between Spring Hill, and they're more directly lined up in the direct wind breeze of the sewer treatment plant. And these are the people who are aligned most directly in front of all of those pipes that come down and, um, disturb their, their domestic peace. And this is not big enough. County Attorney, how do we? Is this a nineteen-eighty-three, um, lawsuit? How do you get services when you're inside the Urban Services area? And your policies for, uh, the comp plan, um, the city's own words says that they will give these people contemporary urban services, and that's just not true. Why should people between Crawfville and Spring Hill Road have to load theirs in the backyard? And people between Micasuki, that triangle, and Centerville Road, and Thomasville Road, and Meridian Road can send all theirs down through pipes that we are paying for to review and pay for illicit spills that the people who are paying for it can't get the service? What can we do to ensure that the USA is complied with in full?
Yes, Madam County Attorney, if you can respond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only thing I can say in response to that is if that is something that the Board wants us to research and bring back, then we can definitely do that. I do not have an answer for you off, off the cuff.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Proctor, were you going to?
Yes, this is,
Move for an agenda item to come back in that regard? The city is baffling if it's in, within the USA, was this, if it's in, within the U, uh, the Urban Services area. I think that's a good inquiry and a good question. Why?
I mean, Funeral Home is not on Sewer Services down there. I mean, um, I make that motion, Madam Chair, the, uh, for our staff to, um, look into, bring back some strategies that the people who live in this, the USA can actually receive the services monopolized and provided exclusively by the city. What can we do to get them included, especially when they live directly across the street from the sewer treatment plant? My motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor, for an agenda item to come back on that issue. Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner Caban. Any further discussion? Commissioner Caban?
I, I just wanna say a quick, uh, shout-out and thank you to staff. I know they've been working, um, very diligently, um, to get the construction in Phase One A. Uh, when I've been in Woodville, I've seen the crews out there working, and so, um, you know, folks out in Lake Monson, you know, I see that the construction going on the northeast side as well, so just, you know, thank you, Anna Padilla, I appreciate you, um, and, uh, looking forward to seeing the rest of the phases come to fruition.
Absolutely. Any other comments? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye as far as agenda item coming back. Any opposition? Hearing none, it passes, and I vote, uh, thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Now, I would like to entertain a motion, uh, from you, Commissioner Proctor, in reference to consent item twenty-two. Is there a second? Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote, uh, any opposition? Thank you so much, uh, Commissioners. Mr. County Administrator?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, item number twenty-three, uh, promotes resident ownership of manufactured mobile home communities. You recall, uh, Commissioners, at your Legislative Priorities Workshop just last month, that the Board requested additional information related to the sale of manufactured mobile home parks for consideration of a new legislative priority to support resident ownership. This item, uh, seeks Board consideration of a state legislative priority to expand the notice provisions for residents related, uh, to the sale of the mobile home park and their right, uh, first right of refusal to purchase the park. Currently, Florida law, uh, does require mobile home parks, uh, mobile home park owners to provide notice and first right of refusal to homeowners associations when, uh, the park is listed for sale. Absent an HOA, Commissioners, formal notice and the first right of refusal is currently not required. Similarly, mobile home, uh, owners are exempt from these requirements if they receive an unsolicited purchase offer. The agenda item before you, Commissioners, provides all this information and includes a draft position statement for the Board's consideration as a legislative priority to expand these notice provisions and include all individual homeowners regardless of how the third-party purchase offer was received, and to provide residents a first right of refusal to match unsolicited offers. With, at that, you may recall that Commissioner O'Keefe, O'Keefe advanced this issue. Um, Commissioners, we're seeking Board direction. We have no speakers on this item. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. County Administrator. I have Commissioner O'Keefe in queue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the proposed legislative, uh, priority related to the sale of manufactured mobile home parks.
Thank you. Is there a second? Uh, Commissioner, uh, Minor, thank you. Mr. O, uh, Commissioner O'Keefe, any discussion?
Yes, um, I just, I wanna thank staff for bringing this back. It was, um, it just, I, I really appreciate you, you knocked down the park, um, despite how I explained it last time, knowing what I was talking about, and bringing back some great examples. Um, and I'm excited we can advocate for this because there are approximately eleven-thousand mobile homes or manufactured homes in Leon County, and this issue is only specific to where a person owns the home but leases the lot that they're on in a mobile home park. And this is to combat or prevent the situations we've seen over the past few years where an outside investor buys out the park and doubles the rent on people. And if you own a mobile home but not the land, uh, you often may not have the money to move it, to find another place to live, and for these folks, um, this is one remaining option for affordable housing. And again, I want to reiterate, this priority is only to help those mobile homeowners try to organize and buy their own mobile home park, um, if someone else outside is trying to buy it first. So, just thank, thank staff.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Minor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just real quick, I wanna thank staff for writing the agenda item and also to, uh, Commissioner O'Keefe for bringing up the issue. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other comments? Uh, well, I'd like to also thank staff for this very thorough analysis and some comparisons with, with other states, uh, as well. Uh, I will vote in favor of this particular item. Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe, for raising it, because what we're doing is we're protecting consumer rights. This is a consumer rights issue, and I don't believe it's a burden on the own, on the owners of a mobile, um, home establishment to also give notice to the individuals that rent in that mobile home. There is already a certain minimum requirement to give notice to the homeowners association, uh, and so why not also extend that same notice to owners, uh, that are renting in that mobile home capacity? So, I am certainly, uh, in favor of it. Uh, if there's no other speakers, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? I vote aye. With Commissioner Welch out of, out of chamber. Mr. County Administrator?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Commissioners, item number twenty-four is an overview of Blueprint, uh, the Blueprint Intergovernmental Agency's current organizational structure. Uh, Commissioners, as requested by the Board at your October tenth meeting, this agenda item provides, uh, that overview of the Blueprint IA's, uh, organizational structure. Commissioners, there, as Commissioner Proctor demonstrated, there's extensive documentation that have been, that has been provided to you, attached to this item regarding the purpose and the history and the structure and the operation, uh, and the success of Blueprint over the past twenty years. Uh, in the item, we, uh, discuss the model utilized by Leon County for our infrastructure surtax as a, um, unique structure that was put in place, one of its kind in, in Florida, uh, was created, uh, from a lengthy and highly intentional and, and public, uh, process that began back in about the mid nineteen-nineties. I'll talk a little bit about that in a moment, but the goal of which, of course, as you know, Commissioners, was the creation, um, uh, the goal of Blueprint from its creation was to achieve our community's most ambitious, uh, infrastructure needs. Um, and later, as, when we extended the sales tax, to also capitalize on our greatest targeted economic opportunities over the life of the sales tax. As a quick overview, Commissioners, the, the agenda also provides, uh, some frequently asked questions, uh, there in a section to quickly and, and clearly ask and answer some of the questions that have come up, uh, of late. Uh, finally, the item, uh, covers a request made to the city to schedule a joint workshop, uh, on this issue, on the structure of Blueprint, uh, which was declined by the city. However, a similar item on the structure of Blueprint, uh, was recently, uh, accepted by the City Commission back on August twenty-third, relatively recently, uh, at which time there was no further action taken by the city. Um, that city agenda item is also included in your materials, Commissioners, and most recently, importantly, the Blueprint IA, again, at just your last meeting on November seventh, asked for informational items to come back, uh, which will be presented at your February meeting, uh, uh, for the Blueprint IA review, uh, of the, of the process and the steps required to change the current management structure, uh, from the IMC to have the Blueprint Director, uh, the OEV Director, and the Blueprint Attorney report directly, uh, to the Blueprint Board. Now, with that as a quick, uh, introduction, Commissioners, I'd like to take just a couple of minutes more here. This is, this is a rare moment where I'd really like to take a couple of minutes here because I think some clarification i- in general is, is really needed, and this is a good opportunity for us to do that, Madam Chair. Um, and, and again, I'd like to make some very important points, uh, to hopefully address questions and concerns that have come up on the part of the Board, um, or at least help, uh, provide a better understanding of this unique structure and why and how, despite its imperfections, uh, it has been absolutely instrumental, uh, in our ability over just the last couple of decades to deliver hundreds of millions of dollars in infrastructure projects, uh, proposed to the voters and agreed upon in the inter-local agreement between the county and the city. Uh, again, Commissioners, I'll take just a couple of minutes. I, I do appreciate your indulgence. Uh, I think it's very important, um, uh, to help the Board continue to make the most productive use of your time and to make the very best decisions possible on this issue, which I know is the intent, uh, of every Commissioner here. So, uh, Commissioner, uh, this will be a very rare, very plainspoken overview on, on my part, which, which again, I think, uh, it, it hopefully, uh, is helpful to you, and you can appreciate the spirit in which it's, it's being offered tonight. Uh, it won't take a lot of time, Commissioners, uh, to recount the track record of Blueprint, uh, because I think the results of Blueprint are clear, and they speak for themselves. Suffice to say, Commissioners, though, uh, the Blueprint structure that we have in place, um, uh, through that structure, we have been able to modernize our critical infrastructure in this community to keep it safe and functioning. Well, we've gone far beyond that. We've created places for people and businesses to thrive. We've turned contaminated brownfields that laid fallow for decades into world-class parks, entertainment venues. We've preserved and made accessible thousands of acres of our incredible natural assets, uh, for this community and the people to recreate and enjoy truly generational projects, Commissioners. And Commissioners, as you know, the list goes on and on and on. Um, it's important to point out, Commissioners, that these Blueprint projects have not only been transformational on their own, uh, but the manner in which they've, they have been delivered, um, has been, uh, has been done so in, in a way that has been truly catalytic in that they have attracted these projects, hundreds of millions of dollars in additional private sector investment, which has magnified, uh, their impact. Commissioners, I know that you know all of this because you, uh, are responsible for this. You should take credit for this, you should, um, uh, be proud of this yourselves and Commissioners that have come, uh, before you. Now, as you know, these types of results in a community, any community, and I can assure you, any community, in this relative short period of time, don't just happen. Uh, has it always been easy? Nope. Uh, nor frankly, should we expect it to be easy, uh, when you consider the magnitude of what we're doing through Blueprint. Um, as all of you can surely attest, uh, this process has become arduous, uh, and at times, uh, maybe even a little frustrating of late. I get that. After all, Commissioners, I think it's important, uh, to always keep in mind that the Blueprint structure itself brings not one, but two Commissions, two separate Commissions together. Twelve independently elected Commissioners together as the IA to make important decisions, uh, generational decisions, I would submit to you, to implement a very ambitious, long-range plan. Uh, it includes a commitment to these pros, to these projects over the long haul, certainly, uh, but it also ensures that we continue to make the best and smartest decisions possible at every step along the way. Um, Commissioners, as you know very well, you do all of this as the Blueprint IA with an unlimited number of other issues that emerge as potential projects and proposed programs, which compete for these limited resources. Not an easy thing to do. Uh, and, and here's the thing, and it may be the most important thing that I say. When the county and city Commissioners put this structure in place, they knew this would not be easy for you to do, and that's why they put this structure in place. That's why you have things like voting thresholds in place in order to change projects and ensure that the long-term commitment of these projects is followed through on. But these Commissions also recognized that your structure also needed to account for projects that may need to change, uh, when there is ample justification to do so and when there's substantial support from the IA to do so. That's in your rules. I'll talk about that in, in just a minute. Commissioners, as the agenda item says, there are key components. When I say this, these things don't just happen, there are key structural components to Blueprint Two Thousand and the Blueprint IA, and we've highlighted these in your, in your documentation, in your, in your agenda item, which together, no one of which is sort of the, the key, but together, there's sort of a force multiplier to get these projects done. Uh, the consolidated decision-making, certainly, of the IA, the long-term commitment of an approved list of projects, the joint management of the IMC, which removes jurisdictional, uh, barriers and leverages the resources of both governments, a dedicated team focused solely on the implementation of these projects, uh, and initiatives, uh, through Blueprint and the OEV, and the integration of all of this with planning and MWSBE and other things, things that simply don't exist anywhere else. Commissioners, you've certainly noticed that I'm pretty quiet at your IMC meetings. Uh, you'd have to notice, it's maybe the only time that I'm, that I am quiet. Um, uh, but this is by design, and a couple of Commissioners have, have asked me about this, uh, recently, and, um, but it's, it's by design to give you unfettered access at your meetings directly to the expert technical project staff, so, uh, and to give you ample space as the IA to make whatever decisions the IA wishes to make consistent with your inter-local agreement established by the city and the county commissions. Now, Commissioners, now, Now, Commissioners, now that we're here in the county commission chambers, I want to take the opportunity to readily admit to you that I'm not an expert on all things. But I spent the better part of the 1990s co-staffing the initial Blueprint 2000. Every project, every number, every comma that you see there, which took literally years before it went to ballot, and that was the original Blueprint plan from start to finish with the ECC. Years later, when we went back to the voters to extend the sales tax, I led the staff effort from the city and the county in its entirety, a process which, again, took another couple of years, working with commissions, citizens committees, demonstrating to the larger community what we were able to do, that we followed through with our commitment to the very letter, and we did that. Now, you may be saying to yourself, Vince, I have no problems with any of this. This all sounds great. What I do have concerns about is this structure, and I've heard concerns from Commissioners about this structure, in particular, the IMC, something that may feel unfamiliar. It doesn't look like the way that we operated at the county commission. Let me shine a very bright light on that for you. I'll take this opportunity to do that. Commissioners, I would say to you that when it comes to the delivery of these projects, that there is nothing more important than this. The IMC, made up of myself and the city manager, simply ensures that the highest level of coordination is built into the structure and that the full resources of the city and the county can be brought to bear on these projects. Let me tell you exactly what that means. Blueprint projects are by design across jurisdiction. Again, I know the Board knows this. What that means is that any Blueprint project may impact a city street, and then a little further down the road, it may impact a county road. It might require the relocation of city utilities. It may require stormwater capacity from a county stormwater pond. It may require land from the city. It may impact a county neighborhood. It may require coordination with the city with another major infrastructure project, and it may require coordination with the county with yet another county infrastructure project, and don't even get me started on permitting, Commissioners, and a whole lot more. This happens, to a certain extent, on every Blueprint project, and the level of coordination that the IMC does is built into this process to ensure that that happens without you even as much as knowing about it. And any one of these projects could be disrupted, derailed, or delayed by any one of the things that I just mentioned. That's what the IMC does, Commissioners, plain and simple, and without it, you could probably get the picture that it would make these projects orders of magnitude more difficult, more time-consuming, and more expensive to accomplish. But who's in charge? Commissioners, I heard that at your IA meeting. Let me assure you that it is you. Who's in charge? It is you. It's the IA. You make the decisions at the IA, and we, as the IMC, ensure that those decisions are executed. Those decisions that you may individually support and those decisions that you may not individually support, but all of those decisions supported by the IA. Commissioners, you're guided by rules and procedures at the IA, and I know they limit, perhaps, the flexibility that you may be used to at the county or the city respectively, but let me be very clear. Those are your rules, and those changes to those rules can be initiated by a simple majority vote of the city and the county commission because they are your rules. Commissioners, wrapping up, I appreciate your patience. My only goal here is that this might help you either avoid or have more effective discussions related to the Blueprint structure, or even it may help you hone in on any specific changes that you may believe are advisable or helpful or preferred. That's, again, the spirit in which I offer all this today. But I do feel like some clarification was absolutely needed. Commissioners, I've told Commissioners quietly, and I'm happy to share with you publicly, the tremendous pride and the occasional frustration that I too feel with the Blueprint structure. But if I knew of a more effective way to collectively administer between the city and the county these programs and execute these projects, if you know anything about me, you wouldn't have to go look for them. I would recommend it to you. So with that, Commissioners, again, I really thank you for allowing me this time. I hope more than anything, it's helpful and constructive, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. We recommend option one, and I want to note that we do have one speaker card.
Thank you. Mr. County Administrator, if you want to introduce the Speaker.
Stanley Sims.
Mr. Sims.
Mr. Administrator, thank you. That benefited me. And I want to say, I'm very proud of Blueprint. Blueprint have done some things that the county administrator did not say. When we face economic times, it was because of Blueprint, we had extra money to pump into our community to sustain us. But here is what I don't think that our administrator gets. This is a government I can trust. But Blueprint operates on two governments. It takes one government to turn you down. And being a black, small businessman where Blueprint has not funded one black project? I can't sleep at night with that. Just take me off the radar. Take me off the radar. I've got a letter right now that went to all of you all about how I am being currently I've got a city attorney who is resigning for being blatantly disrespected. You can't sweep shit, excuse me, you can't sweep mess like that under the rug. And unfortunately, my good friend, Mr. Vince, that's beyond your control. I've had problems with this government, but it's never gone to the extent that it does over there. I don't have to tell no lie, ask Brent. I had a county employee hit me with a damn truck one time. But the response is different, Vince. When I got on that phone, I didn't call Vince. I, where he at? He ain't here somewhere. There he is. That man had county trucks all down Avondale Way. Check it on me. I don't have to come up and call you, Nick. I didn't have to bother Proctor because they treat everybody the same. That's what we gotta deal with. And that's beyond Vince. That's beyond Vince, and it's unfair and it's unfortunate to ask him to train people to treat everybody with dignity and respect because he can't do that. Mr. Proctor, I need to say this when my time is up. They do have an advisory council meeting for utilities. Actually, it was today. The city does have one or two. Thank y'all. I'm not going to speak on my other.
Thank you, Mr. Sims.
My children get lopes and I'm diabetic.
We appreciate it. Any other speakers, Mr. County Administrator?
Madam Chair, that concludes your speakers on this item.
Thank you. And I appreciate staff and the county administrator for providing us this very detailed analysis in agenda item number 24. I know a lot of us have had questions about Blueprint, about any possible changes, amendments, and I believe it lays it out. I have Commissioner Caban in the queue. I don't, okay. And let me say this as well. We have a public meeting that has been noticed for 6 o'clock today, and so I will probably entertain comments for maybe one minute, two minutes at 6 o'clock. Oh, is that clock correct? It's 5:59. So what we will do, we will table comments, motions regarding this particular agenda item, and we will now open the floor for the public hearing of Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, this may be a quick one because it is your second and final public hearing to consider adopting any ordinance, amending the definitions in accessory use sections of Chapter 10 of the LDC related to accessory dwelling units, and we have no speakers on this item. We are recommending option one. Move of approval.
Thank you. Is there any comment? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And I vote aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Now, we will go back to agenda item number 24. I have Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Administrator, thank you for that synopsis, long synopsis, of history on Blueprint and your opinion of the structure and how it works. Only a couple of us, I think myself and Commissioner Proctor, were here long enough to remember when Blueprint was not under the auspices of the city and county and did not have the IMC. I believe that, Mr. Administrator, when we moved to the structure that we moved to, it was with the hopes that we could create a better alignment between Blueprint, the city and county's agendas and making sure that everything lined up so we could be more efficient and succinct in the way we went about getting our projects done. I think thus far, we've been effective in doing so. I heard Mr. Sims's comments, and quite frankly, I can't be concerned from the standpoint of what all is going on across the street, and I can't make a decision on Blueprint's structure based off of that. I think Blueprint has been effective. I do believe that the IMC creates a level of accountability that we can hold our county administrator, our city manager, too, concerning our projects getting done and things being done in a timely manner. As I spoke of last time, it's going to take a lot of convincing to move me in a place that we need to change our structure, change much about the way we do business, especially given the fact that for the past 24-plus years, we've done business that way and it's been effective. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion for option one, understanding that there may be some difference in opinions on some of the things in the places that we should go and the thoughts that we should have, but I think we should be very careful. I think Blueprint, when it was created, was very well thought out, very deliberate in the way it was created, very deliberate in the policies that were put in place to make sure that if we were going to change projects, if we were going to move certain things around, that we gave it the utmost consideration, and it wasn't done just off a whim. Just the last meeting we have, the last couple meetings, we've had conversations about the substantial amendment process and adding things to it, and we did start those processes, but one of the things that was said was that process will be a long process, and it's not one that we can just take a four-three or a seven-five vote or a weighted vote and say, okay, now we add this to the agenda. Because, and I believe it was Commissioner Meyer that said this, and I do agree whole heartedly, when we put things on the ballot, our citizens expect those things to get done. And for us to add something to a priority that we did not tell our citizens or have our citizens look at and vote on, it needs to be a very high bar in which we do that. Not only that, I get to the conversation around the increase in budget on items and things like that, but I also understand that our citizens also had expectation when they voted for certain things, that it would be built to a nature that was proposed when the ballot initiative was put out. We can't expect that the cost in 2023, 2024, 2025 will match that of 2020 when the ballot was actually voted on. And so we can almost assume that in some places, we're going to have some increases. Now, the change orders and the increases coming back for us are for our consideration. I think that's not a bad thing to look at and add, but to say that some of the things that we're looking at doing, like, for instance, even on the airport gateway, you know, to cap it at a certain number, almost says without question that you have to change the scope. So even if you're saying, okay, well, I can't change the scope because everybody doesn't agree with changing the scope, well, I'm going to do it if I cap it at 85 million, 87 million, 82 million, but through inflationary costs, you know it really going to cost 95 to get it done. You know you're not going to get the same project. So I hear the frustrations of our Commissioners. I hear the, and the structure piece of it. I hear some frustration when it comes to the, some of the policies that we have. I hear some frustrations when it comes to the personalities that are involved in certain positions that we have to deal with every day when it comes to Blueprint. But I think there is even ways to address those things through policy. For example, if we have a problem with the Director of Blueprint, I think we take those things to the IMC and we ask them to address those things or to give evidence why those things aren't being addressed. Again, everything, if we have a problem with the attorney, I think we take those things to the IMC and ask them to address those things. If they're going to, if the IMC is going to take responsibility for managing the process as well as the people and hiring and firing the people, well, then thereby, they're putting that pressure on themselves to have to answer the questions that we have and solidify the stances and the comments that they make. And it sounds like to me, Mr. Administrator, that you're not at all ducking, being able, us holding you accountable in that way. As a matter of fact, as I believe it, when our previous director was being questioned on some things, some of those questions were directed directly at you, Mr. County Administrator, and the city manager to ask in reference to his performance as well as the process he went through. So I just, I get wanting the direct access to hire and fire the manager, hire and fire the attorney, hire and fire this one, hire and fire that one. But I also understand that if I wanted to, if I really wanted those things addressed, there is a process to go through where I could put, that I could place that kind of accountability and pressure on the people who are made to manage them, to answer questions of why they haven't held those folks accountable for the things I find questionable. We all are a part of organizations as well as businesses whereby we have a chain of command that we go through, and we have people, respected people, that report to individuals. And in that way, that chain of command, you know, the person that's under you may have somebody who's reporting to them whereby if there's a mistake that that person makes that's reporting to the person that's under you, who are you going to hold accountable? You're going to hold accountable the person that hired them, and you're going to ask them to address it, and they can't address it, well, then maybe you're not right for that position. And so I say all that to say that I get the questions on structure, I get the questions on policy, but when I got a man sitting in front of me that says, that's saying to me that this structure has worked, I've seen it work for 24-plus years, I've seen us change it from one to the other, and I've seen it become more efficient as a result of the change, and I also have a city, county administrator saying, if my folks are not, if the people that I manage and hire are not doing their job to the best of the ability that you think they should be, then I'm willing to take the bullets. I'm willing to have you question me. I'm willing to have you ask those questions of me, put that responsibility on me, hold me accountable to make sure that they do things right or that I address the issue. I don't necessarily see a problem. So, Madam Chair, thank you for indulging me on that. I just, I really, again, I appreciate the explanation that the county administrator gave, and I even appreciate us questioning the structure. I'm just not in the place right now that I think we are. I think what we have is solid, and I think we need to continue with it and maybe even put more pressure on it. As Commissioner Bill Proctor said at our last meeting, when he wanted something addressed, what'd you say, Commissioner Proctor? You said to the IMC, you said, county administrator, city manager, you need to get your staffs together. That's exactly what you said, and with the expectation that they did. with the expectation that they did, that they would get their staffs together. And I would imagine if they don't get their staffs together, they will have to answer to you.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox.
Most of option number one. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Minor is in queue.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You too.
You know, at this, at County Commission, I think it's the last meeting or the meeting before, we had the request to take a look at the structure of Blueprint. And I think it was Commissioner Proctor that requested that. I can't remember, Commissioner O'Keefe. But I support taking a closer look at the structure. It's healthy for us to review the decisions made by our predecessors. At the same time, I believe we must also be thoughtful about why those decisions were made and think very carefully about the rationale and the line of logic that was followed to get to where we are today. A couple of years, the Florida Association of Counties has a legislative conference every year, and they basically mix it up. They have the legislative conference in different cities around Florida, just to kind of, you know, have different, you know, perspectives of the state as a whole. A couple of years ago, the Florida Association of Counties had their legislative conference here in Tallahassee, in Leon County. And there was a tour given to these county commissioners from all over the state of Florida of Cascade Park. And I was surprised at how stunned they were about just the transformative nature of this park, the major project that it was, the intertwining of the multiple governments to make that work. And I thought to myself, well, you know, you all have, many of you have, you know, penny sales tax initiatives. But what they do is they have, you know, they have the statutory requirement where it's divvied up to the municipalities and the county, or they have an interlocal agreement where it's kind of following that same type of mechanism. And what happens in those other counties, they receive the penny sales tax dollars. And then the sales tax dollars are basically apportioned to the individual cities in the county. And the individual cities in the county, they go off and they kind of do their own projects, more or less. So the scale of the projects the other counties in the state of Florida have is nowhere near the scale that we have for some of our large projects here. Cascade Park, Capital Circle. I mean, we have projects where you've got a state road with county crossroads with city stormwater utilities that receive CRTPA funding, FDOT funding. I mean, the layers of different government entities here is staggering. And so you think about it. I mean, what would, what makes this work? And it's natural to think, well, we have the power to bring direct accountability in the director, in the county attorney within Blueprint. But you think about how to make these multi-level projects work. It requires buy-in from both the city and the county to move these projects forward. And if you think about organizational management, if you have a separate entity without a lot of skin in the game from the city and the county at the degree that we have now, you're not going to see those projects move along with the speed that they currently do. So I think the IMC and the current structure is, is proof positive that the transformational projects that we have involving multiple layers of multiple agencies is working. And I don't see a reason, I'm frustrated with Blueprint in many ways. I think a lot, all of that, I think, is among the directors that we need to work out amongst ourselves. But I think the staff and the current structure are tight, and our staff are doing basically what the directors asked them to do. And I think we always need to keep that in mind. We've got a lot of great successes under our belt, years of transformational projects that are stunning to other county commissioners around the state that come visit us. And so I support Commissioner Maddox's motion for option one. I think this structure, is it perfect? Perhaps not. But I think it's the most perfect structure that we have, and we have got the proof to show it. So Commissioner Maddox, thanks for making the motion. I intend to support this motion on the floor. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Minor. I believe I have Commissioner Proctor in queue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was looking at some photos that were taken of you earlier today, and they're quite stunning still. Thank you. Madam Chair, I'm stunned also by that array of hydrangea flowers, light blue, going to turn blue, with those stunning yellow roses. And I believe those are white roses or carnations. I've never, you know, the florist has a very, and I've never seen an interpretation of that kind of arrangement, and it's very, very pretty, and it's just a unique one. Thank you. In many ways, our Blueprint, as has been attested to and by our county administrator and the witnesses of Commissioner Minor and Commissioner Maddox, it is an arrangement and array much like that. Flowers of different hues, our thoughts of 12 commissioners of different intensities of color, some of the same family, some thoughts are unique and just completely contrasted one to the other. And that occurs as our thoughts emerge on different issues around here. When you go to court and one side is lawyered up and the other side is not, it sends a signal, it sends a message to the court. Everybody looking, the jurors, one side ain't got no lawyer. That side that comes to our meetings that ain't got no lawyer are the policymakers. We walk in there and we have questions. And I can be real plain and direct about my thoughts. And I think that, as I look at, and some of the things about number 24 is like looking back at children's books when you were growing up. When you're growing up, you saw old books that you grew up with, you know, Henny Penny, you know, stuff like that. And looking through these agenda items in 24, I actually was here when the introduction of August 29th, 2000, coming from Parwes Alom and Vincent Long, Blueprint 2000 Project Management Structure, and the November 2000 Sales Tax. And looking at this governing structure that was proposed, it's kind of like going and seeing your old beginner's reading book. And it was touching to walk back through the quarters of time to see the evolution that Commissioner Maddox spoke to. Problem at the Blueprint is that Commissioners don't have a lawyer. And it, you know, Vince is represented, Reese is represented, they lawyered up. And Attorney Dawson says she reports to Artie White. She's not our lawyer. She's somebody else's lawyer. And when our board needs to be advised, she's seemingly defensive to the structure of the staff people who are giving us all of our information, teaspoon feeding us what they interpret us to know. And we still don't have a lawyer to interpret anything different from what their lawyer is telling them. It's good to go to court with your own lawyer, and we're not lawyered up. We need to be. And I don't have a problem with, because every project, every dollar, I've probably voted, as I begin my 28th year of serving on this board tonight, I've probably voted for, Jesus, billions of dollars and probably voted on more dollars than anyone in the history of this 200-year-old community. No one has voted for more public dollars spent than myself on local projects. I'm seasoned, and I'm also seasoned enough to be aware that I don't like a lawyer who's speaking to me from the perspective of the staff and what they've gotten together. And there are things that our board wants to do that we can't do as a body. And though Vince says that we're uniform, and we're there together, and this arrangement that we had in August 29th of 2000, with the governing body Blueprint and the governmental corporation being on top up here. But we were told by Attorney Dawson's interpretation of the city and county roles, that we are not a merged body of one, but that we must go back to our respective commissions for approval of a county position. We were told that there's projects and there's policies. And in order to, if something changes, we have to do substantial agreements on certain, certain things. But we are sitting there in a de facto reality of serving as the Blueprint. But when it comes time to, we're kicked out the room, forced to come back over here, we bring up something, we ask for an agenda item, then if we agree, then we ask the city to consider it. If they accept it, then I guess we put it on the Blueprint. That's just too much, yah, 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 too many steps. We're not the Congress of the United States. We're much more functional. We don't want to resemble the Congress of the United States. But these steps that we're doing, and I find obstinance from a desire to even issue a policy about conduct, we can't do that. Really? We are the blueprint, I'm missing here, structure on top right here, but we don't have any, share this right here. This is Commissioner, shall I share it down to the jelly? We don't have the, here's another one. We don't have the ability to address, I'll send that one down, that's 2000, to say behavior, how to treat a policy dealing with the public. We can't do that as a body joint. We have to go back to our individual meeting. So what is the meaning of being a joint body that ain't a joint body? So the interpretation by one human being is that we are not what that sheet of paper and that structure shows us, functionally. We have to leave a meeting to talk about conduct, about people we're over supposedly, but we're not. When I specifically asked Attorney Dawson, who do you report to? She said, Mr. White, Mr. Artie White. I need a lawyer that reports to me, to our board. And we're at a disadvantage for movement, for movement of projects. And while she represents the staff, we sit there and she don't represent us. She tells us that. And I don't like nobody, I mean, I'm good with Roberts rules, but don't jack Roberts rules out to exploit Robert as a defense mechanism or to hide behind or to create that as an obstacle to stop and to slow down our board's desire to make changes or to elevate issues. That's not what Roberts is supposed to do, is supposed to facilitate. And we have the structure that have the governing body. If this body don't govern together, under our current lawyer's interpretation, our lawyers say we don't govern together. That's just not so. So I'm confused. I'm very much confused. I'd like to see us add a lawyer that the Blueprint Board is wrapped up by. I mean, could you imagine Attorney Olsteen sitting in here telling us, who you report to, Ms. Olsteen? I report to Allen, you know, I report to Vince. And she defends staff's position on whatever their recommendation, that's all she, and what she sits there and do is tell us what we can't do and why staff is so mighty and so right. That's a problem. We need a lawyer on this desk or in this room that advises this board. But Attorney Olsteen is our lawyer. She is ours. And she don't sit there and try and stop, but she tries to facilitate the directions of policy desires that we have. And we don't need a lawyer who stops us from what we want to do in the interest of when dynamics change. When Florida State don't want no project no more, we don't just stay stuck on stuff. We change in our effort to do what we're elected to do and to do the best and to reach that highest good that we can with reasonable and marginal dollars in some instances. And our desire to put Spring Hill Road in play to be four-lane, y'all heard me say earlier tonight, here we are locked into the posture of a 50.5-foot bridge that's four-lane on a two-lane road. And at the Blueprint meeting, we have, we're told we can't bring it up. We can't discuss it. Or we have to come back here to discuss it first and bring it back. Y'all know I'm telling the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. That's what that building, this particular building we're sitting in requires people to talk, to put their hand up in the air. You got to do that on third floor, fourth floor. I don't know if any courtroom's on the second floor, but that's what you got to do. So I'm telling the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. I'm frustrated. We need a lawyer. And I'm not arguing against anything Vince has said. I'm not arguing against the feelings of Commissioner Maddox. But I don't like seeing staff protected, defended, and all of their positions are stood up for by some lawyer who then tells us why policymakers have to go back and do something else. They can't act. That's the problem. And I mean, I desire to hear from others, but I'd like to see a recommendation that we get a lawyer. We ain't got one. Staff does, but we don't. She reports to the staff. That's the problem.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Madam Chair, I want to clarify.
I'm sorry.
Want to clarify.
On point.
Yes, yes. Mr. Administrator, Commissioner Proctor, points well made. Could you explain that to us, please? Because as she sits on that dais, I don't care who she reports to, she represents our interest, correct?
Sure.
Or the attorney.
Yeah, let me do that. Madam Chairman.
Please.
Commissioner Maddox, and I was listening very closely to Commissioner Proctor. And look, my job here is not to be an obstructionist to what this board wants or what the IA board wants, just again, to try to help facilitate if I can. Let me tell you about the lawyer position so we're all very, very clear about it. 99, maybe 0.9% of Susan Dawson's job in effectuating Blueprint is doing right-of-way, eminent domain, executing contracts with vendors. A small but very important part of her job is to help you as the IA facilitate your meeting now. In so doing, she has to, and again, no decisions have to go back and forth between the city and the county on projects. That simply is not the case. That the why, why the IA is formed the way it is is to avoid that. What you do have is an interlocal agreement that speaks to certain structural elements, large structural elements, that would have to come back to each of the commissions if you wanted to change those elements in the IA. But projects, no. Upon the voting thresholds that you establish, you provide that direction, you meet those thresholds, those things get done, period. So, but again, to Commissioner Proctor's point and just to demonstrate, again, the willingness to try to get to where the board wants to go, because I believe that that's really the most important thing. If that's the, if that's the will of the IA, not to say it's something that I agree with or don't agree with, that really doesn't matter. What does matter is, Commissioner Proctor, if the IA decided that you wanted to add a lawyer to represent you at the dais to facilitate your meetings, you could do that upon a vote of the IA. That's all.
But Vince, we're told we can't hold those discussions there.
I understand there's a lot of potions that go back and forth and that sort of thing, and it becomes confusing. But again, I'm trying to simplify that. That is something that can, now, there are other issues that come up and you say, you know, Attorney Dawson's unenviable job sometime is to say, and believe me, it's not, these are not what people want to do, is to say Commissioners, your own interlocal agreements require you to go to the city and require you to go to the county if that's what you want to do. But again, to address that specific structural question, if the Blueprint IA wanted an agenda item to come back to say, hey, let's evaluate this position or that position, that's all you would have to do is to provide that direction of the IA. I'm not suggesting doing that. I'm just clarifying that that's what you would have to do in that case. Again, the distinction, Commissioner Proctor, and I see the confusion, is that the IMC is in your interlocal agreement. Okay, so that would require it going back to the city and the county. That's a large structural element. But any individual position that the board might say, the IA board might say, hey, we want more want more transportation engineers assigned to these projects, we want, that's simply a matter of providing that direction at a meeting and agenda items like that would come back and the board would be in the posture to make whatever decisions you want to make. And we want to facilitate that.
Well, I feel like this, I feel like, uh, you and Reese, uh, Reese works under the city, you work under the county commission. Uh, functionally, you and Reese hold the authority over that staff, over that lawyer, everything. When we attempt to make motions to change something, uh, I recognize, I'm, I'm clear and I'm good, I'm really good with Attorney Dawson, she's good, she's a good attorney for staff. Um, she's not necessarily for the board, she understands her lawyers and she represents that very well. She's the staff's attorney. I don't know why staff comes to a meeting that we're in charge of, suggests a policy that staff respects citizen. There's a problem. So something commonsensically that ought to be, but to happen at our meetings, such as what you just described, we're here because we can't talk about that in our meetings, that's why we're down here struggling right now. And I want to go somewhere about 6:30 tonight if I, if I can. But it's because we're forced to come back here and when we get to, uh, it's like, you want to talk about certain motion and we're told, uh, 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 like we children, we ain't no stinking children.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We're not that. This thing is out of control. I don't want to participate in this no more. I'm telling you, this is not working for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. I appreciate your observations. Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, you know, I seconded that motion, you get that?
Yes.
Okay. And, and I agree with basically everything that's being said. I think Commissioner Proctor's points are really well-taken points, I think those are very salient concerns. Um, but at the end of the day, the posture that I'm in right now is one in which I am compelled by the county administrator's assessment of the situation and I accept that I don't know everything and that we have professional staff who programmatically have been working on these projects for a long time. I'm going to be consistent in my assessment of blueprint that I've said before, I don't think it's necessary to be upsetting the apple cart and, and defunding projects or moving money here or there. I think that we had a beautifully laid out, um, direction for executing these projects that has taken a long time, I think that our staff does a good job. And the thing that gives me the most comfort as it relates to Blueprint's administration is our county administrator, who we all without question trust. We, we repeatedly say how much we, we trust and, and respect the county administrator, who is our liaison on the IMC. He is our point of contact to try and get information about projects, to try and communicate our feelings about projects. He gets us in the posture that we need to be in to understand what's happening. And so I completely respect and trust that relationship with the county administrator. And so I, I, I agree it's not perfect. I agree that, that some people on staff at, at Blueprint may overstep their boundaries sometimes in what they say and how they interpret Roberts rules, which is interpretable, which is, I think, problematic in and of itself. Um, but I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater, you know what I'm saying? And until we have some sort of real evidence to suggest that we need a new structure or a new set of managers, I, I'm not, I'm not going to continue to embrace the chaotic nature of trying to completely upset the apple cart. I just don't think that's necessary. I think that it's already been upset to, to the expense of a Northeast project, which is unfortunate. But, you know, these things happen. I think that the people around the table that are elected, we set the policy. I mean, it's simple as that. I get that staff sometimes can be obstructive, in my opinion, they can be opinionated, in my opinion, and that's problematic. However, I don't know a better way to facilitate billions of dollars in, in project execution than what we have. And I think it's, it's proven and it's tested and unfortunately, the personalities around the table, the, the government across the street, um, I think creates problems for us. And, and that synchronicity there gets, again, it's, you got a lot of egos around a table, you got a lot of elected officials, a lot of them don't see eye to eye. And so all of those points that have been made are really good points, but it's, it's like, uh, you know, trying to tame a bull, it's hard to do. And we do the best we can, and I think sometimes we're just hanging on for dear life, trying to get to seven seconds, but at the end of the day, I'm not prepared to, to do anything wild about restructuring the management or, or, I'm willing to listen to motions about whatever, but, you know, at this point, and obviously this is coming back to us at our next blueprint meeting, if I'm not mistaken, in term, in the form of an agenda item, and we'll all be around that table trying to come to some conclusion about how to move forward. But I think the bigger picture is important and that is, we have a duty to taxpayers to execute these projects, to execute them as timely and as efficiently as possible. We are three years into, if I'm not mistaken, a new tax, we got 17 more years to go, we're accelerating a substantial number of those projects so that we can get them online as soon as possible. Again, I, I think that when you look at the costs and you look at the, the increases in the scopes and the increases in the cost, I, I think those are fair things to be concerned with, but I think you also have to be fair with the realities of, of, of life and inflation and, and acceleration of projects. And I think we have to give staff a lot of benefit of the doubt. Um, so I will support Commissioner Maddox's motion. Uh, I'm interested to hear what everybody else has to say, I know we all have interesting opinions, um, but I'm just not prepared at this point to like, do anything wild with blueprint, uh, as I've said before, and I'm probably going to stay consistent with that. I think we just need to, uh, work out amongst ourselves and our personalities what we're trying to do and accomplish and, uh, and just keep moving the ball down the field and be productive for our constituents. And, and really, I mean, pretty soon here, we're going to start seeing a lot of these projects turning dirt. We've been waiting and waiting and waiting and now it's like, boom, they're all about to really get going. So it's a little late in the game to be kind of, you know, throwing everything up in the air and, and trying to reprioritize and have all these other issues. So that's where I'm at on it, I hope you guys can respect that.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Welch.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. I believe everybody has spoken on it, I think I have some lights in queue that haven't gone off. Okay, Commissioner Cavan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, uh, enjoy saying that also, Madam Chair. Um, no surprise to the board, I would not be supporting the motion respectfully. Um, I, I, I do think, uh, Commissioner Maddox and Commissioner Minor, Commissioner Welch, I think everyone has made good points, I'm coming at this from a different perspective. Um, first off, um, Madam Attorney, can, who do you report to?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Thank you, I report to this board.
Who does, um, the blueprint attorney report to?
The place director.
Okay, thank you. Um, my issue is lawyers are in a meeting, are there, in any client, are there to guide us? Okay? We are to ask their opinion of what is the law and what is not the law. It's, it's our job to decide of what direction with that advice at which we are going to go. My frustration, um, with the current structure of blueprint, specifically with the blueprint attorney, is I feel as though that position as it is right now is trying to control the meetings too much. Commissioner Welch, you made a great point, we're policymakers, it's our job to make policy. Um, what I've seen and what I've experienced thus far in blueprint meetings, if there are motions that come before the board, it may not fit the agenda of staff, it is labeled an improper motion. That right there is, is, is a problem because it inhibits us from pushing policy that we were elected to do. Um, additionally, you know, last meeting specifically, I felt that, um, and I'd love to hear the county administrator's opinion, um, but I felt that there were some lines told of, um, the blueprint attorney and how that meeting was managed. Um, so, you know, Mr. Administrator, I would love to hear from you, um, based on how when we were discussing, um, the restructuring of, of blueprint, but your interpretation of, you know, how she performed her job at that moment.
I'm, I'm sorry, Commissioner Cavan, if you, Cavan, you asked the county administrator?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, he's asking your opinion and you can respond.
See, I'm, Commissioner, I may, I may need a, a little more clarification on that, I'm thinking.
Let's do it this way, will you restate?
Sure.
Yeah, restate.
So, so last meeting, there was a motion that came before the board that she claimed to be an improper motion. Um, additionally, we made a motion to waive Roberts rules, which is something we've done in blueprint before and we've done here before. Um, and so anytime we tried to maneuver or make a motion, it was labeled improper. So, um, you know, with, based on the bubble chart, you know, of hierarchy chart, the blueprint attorney reports to the place director, which reports to IMC, so has there been any conversation in regards to the blueprint attorney in response to that?
I'm not sure, is that, are you?
I'm happy to, I'm happy to.
You can respond, but.
Answer openly, no, I, I've not had any interaction with the, with the blueprint attorney on any of that. And quite frankly, I readily admit that I'm very deferential to her legal opinion on these things. Again, there are lots of motions flying around at any given time and sometimes it's Roberts rules and sometimes it's Germanity and sometimes it's with respect to what the jurisdiction there controls and what you have an, an ability to effectuate, sometimes it goes over to the city and she's saying, you can't do that, you've crossed the line over, so there's a lot happening. And so I, I tend to defer with respect to, to, to her determinations on the legality of those things. I could tell you from my standpoint, I've, I've engaged with, uh, with the legal counsel on legal matters and interpretations exactly zero times since, uh, since Ms. Dawson has, has been the attorney there. Um, and, um, so again, with that, I think you could chop some of the things up to style? Is it, is, is it the interaction exactly, you know, what, what, what my interaction would be and that sort of thing? Uh, perhaps not, but I've seen, um, many excellent staff people have a very, inexperienced staff people have an extraordinarily difficult time, um, handling that environment. Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. County Administrator.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cavan.
Yeah, there are, I look at blueprint almost like a, um, construction management company, right? That's what it does, it's blueprint designed, you know, to push projects through, take them to fruition. I think we've seen the product of that over the last 20 years. Um, and when I look at structures like that, it is the only in Florida, and as far as like a, a intergovernmental agency, that's correct, Mr. Administrator. So when I, when I, when I look at the broader scope, you know, there are billions and billions and billions of dollars of public companies that operate in states and cities all over the world. Um, they execute projects way bigger, they have more employees, they have more money coming in and out. Majority of those structures follow a board of directors with a CEO that reports directly to the board of directors. My interpretation of where we're at blueprint right now is, one, I think it's inefficient for staff to have to have an approval from the city manager and then the county administrator. From my interpretation, when staff, when agenda comes out, the city manager has to approve and the county administrator have to approve. Government works slow, we know it's not the strong suit of government. So I think when you have staff reporting to two different governments, it makes things go even slower. Um, additionally, I just feel like we have a legal liability by not having an attorney that reports directly to us. When we seek their advice, it, it is not based on what is best for the board, and I think that that is a fundamental problem. Um, so, um, I will kick it back to you, Madam Chair, but I will not be supporting a motion that is not structurally restructuring.
Thank you. Commissioner Cavan, was there somebody else that, yes, Commissioner O'Keefe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, we are stuck, as Mr. Sims mentioned and, and County Administrator mentioned, um, we are stuck in a bit of situation where we have to work together with another government. And I don't know if it's just because we're all present here, but everyone says nice things about this government, um, and we only have so much control, right? We, we agreed to, to 50/50 control this and we know how, we run a government here, and I'll speak for myself, I'm very happy with it, um, but we have to work together on a 50/50 basis and it creates a bit of a difficulty, which is the same issue you have with IMC, 50/50, it's not 51/49, it's 50/50. And so it's, it's a complicated issue with a good idea, blueprint is good, blueprint is a good idea, it's done good projects, it's doing good projects, but for a number of reasons, I believe today's blueprint is not the same blueprint from 10 years ago. And I think that's what we're hearing from voters, um, which is quite an accomplishment if your voters know what your intergovernmental sales tax agency is called and when the meeting is. Um, so I have some questions and then comments, um, you know, and one thing I want to comment on is, we, we are working around an issue and I, I'm gonna, and I think we're stumbling into narrowing down one thing that might be a good first step. And that's important because we want to change, but we don't want to change everything at once and then we don't know what worked and don't. When you do effective change management, you apply one change at a time, you see how that change works out, and then you apply another change. And so I think that's a good way to go with this. Um, Madam Chair, I have these questions and you can direct them to the.
The county administrator?
Yeah, you know who's coming. Um, Vince, get ready. Uh, and Vince and I have talked about this quite a bit, uh, and Vince and I, and Reese Code met, uh, last month, last month, it felt like it, last week. Um, and, uh, so there's some conflicting thing here. Um, you know, everyone makes his point and, and I stand by what Commissioner Proctor said at the meeting last week, get your people in line. But from what I've been told by the attorney and what I was told by, um, the IMC in that meeting, we, and, we don't have management, staff, uh, HR authority over blueprint staff as a board, and the IMC does not have management, staff, uh, oversight for, uh, collective blueprint employees. The way it was explained to me by you and, um, in summary by the county attorney, um, not the county attorney, um, it's a very different situation. Uh, and the blueprint attorney in the meeting, um, was the city folks report to the city, point period, end of consideration, county folks report to the county, point period, end of consideration, and then joint people, I don't know. But, um, do you have, if we say you need to go hold these people accountable, do you have the authority to do so?
No, so, Madam Chairman, very simple answer. Uh, city employees don't report to me, uh, blueprint employees do, report to me and the city manager, um, as a, as a joint management team, not, not at all unique in joint structures. We have a joint planning department that works exactly the same way. Um, so, uh, yes, but with respect to city employees, certainly, I, I do not have any obviously management oversight, um, over city employees.
Cool, thank you. Um, uh, on the blueprint only employees, am I correct that it takes both members of the IMC to approve a hire? No, no, it takes both members to approve a hire and you both have to agree if you want to terminate or, um, discipline a joint blueprint attorney? Not attorney, sorry, Freudian slip that's coming up next, um, uh, in a different thing, but a, a blueprint staff person?
Uh, not a staff person, the, the staff report to the, to the director of place, the director of place reports to us. So the director of place, as would be customary in an organizational structure, would do those evaluations and make those types of personnel determinations. Um, so he, he could do that on, on his own in this case. Uh, relative to the Department of Place or the Director of Place, uh, the city man, the IMC jointly hires. Relative to the Department of Place or the director of place, the IMC jointly hires and fires the director of the Department of Place.
So you have to be in agreement to hire, and you have to be in agreement to fire?
We have to be in an agreement to hire, and I...
But only one?
But only one to fire, which again is also a customary type of arrangement.
Okay. And when y'all do the place director's performance review, you do it collectively, and kind of you generally line up?
Yes.
Okay. Then, my last question of you is, oh, no, I'll come back to that. So, I have worked in a lot of organizations, I've managed a lot of people, and whoever does your performance review, whoever can discipline you, suspend you, hire you, fire you, that's who you work for. That's what a job is. And so, if, and if you have two bosses, you don't, you pick one each time. You don't really have a boss. You know, you have to figure it out and play politics with your two bosses or more. And so, you know, I want to point out one thing specific to the attorney position, and I want to be clear, this is not to pick on one person, this is the position that that position has been placed in. I think if it were any attorney in that position, the circumstance is what we're talking about. It says here in the documents that, who does the Blueprint General Counsel work for? And it says, "It works independently to provide advice and assistance to the board, director of place, Blueprint, and OEV staff." It's a parliamentarian and under the Robert's Rules of Order. They report directly to the director of place, and their performance evaluation is done by the director of place. So I'm just gonna say in my opinion, director of place is when it comes down to the bottom line, who does performance review and who gets, who's really in charge of what you do and who you report to. So, there's a balance here. Voters have been clear that they are concerned with holding Blueprint accountable. I don't think anybody, well, I don't think many people have said, "Get rid of it," but they're concerned we're not holding Blueprint accountable. And if we can't hold staff accountable, how are we going to say that we're accountable to our voters? And now, now that's not something we can fix here today by changing who reports to who. The city's the city, the county's the county, and I have to tell the voter, if it's a city thing, you gotta take it up with the city, and if it's a county thing, I'll tell Vince. And so I think that's something to keep in mind. Now, there needs to be balance. A board is not supposed to be in every day, things, approving every purchase order and doing all that, but I think we are out of balance, and that's why we're hearing so much about this, is we're not involved enough, but we're not, we don't need to try to go overboard and get into too much of the details, but we feel the need to, I'll speak for myself, I feel the need to, because I have been, because I feel like, and I think I've been given, not complete and honest information over the course of the last year serving on Blueprint. And so every time I get information for this meeting and someone tells me something, I come and I go, "Did that pan out?" Yes. No, that didn't. There was some, not the whole truth there. And I score up, okay, how can I trust? How much do I trust? And it builds and goes down, and I don't feel like there's enough, enough there. And so what I'll come to say is, I'll also say that I'm narrowing in on the attorney position, reporting directly to the board, and being the parliamentarian under the Robert Rules of Order, because I've spoken with the Blueprint attorney on many occasions on a lot of issues, and they're very helpful in a lot of them, spoken to the county attorney on a lot of issues, and I've spoken to my wife as an attorney on a lot of other issues. And I can tell you what it feels like when I'm talking to my attorney and when I'm not talking to my attorney. And I will tell you that my feeling, Blueprint attorney position is not my attorney. I feel like I'm getting cross-examined. And so, I don't think that's an individual thing, I think that's the result of how this reporting is done. So my question, Mr. Administrator, is when we spoke, you mentioned, and you can correct me, that if we wanted to change the attorney position structure, that alone does not happen to require an agreement change, that's a Blueprint policy change. So my question is, if we decided we want to make adjustments to the reporting of the Blueprint attorney, what would be the next steps here, there, or anyway?
Sure. I got you, Madam Chair. Commissioner, I understand your question. We've got an item coming back, again, at the direction of the IA board at the last meeting to bring that back. And that's part of what was included in the direction to bring back at that time, which I believe will lay out, and I haven't seen any drafts or anything like that, but I believe it'll lay out that the IA board has the authority to do that. The IA board used to be, again, I'm trying to, you know, leave personalities and specific positions, you know, people out of it too, but the IA board, for many years, had an attorney on contract that reported to the board. We had a, the evolution of the general counsel position was one that was born out of an increasing role of the staff attorney, that there was so much going on and they were doing so much that it made sense that, hey, the staff attorney could sit as parliamentarian, and those issues were brought to the board at the time, and then the IA board made those determinations. But again, the IA board could decide that you have preferences that are different, and I've certainly heard those loud and clear, and I believe the IA board will be in a determination, will be in a position to make those kind of decisions at your February meeting.
Thank you. Hold on, Commissioner Proctor, hold on.
I'm asking.
Have you...
Two last things, and I'm done, and this is perfect. The, man, I'm excited for Commissioner Proctor, whatever he's gonna say, and I just lost my thought. The, I'll just say that, I'm planting my flag here because it sounds like it truly is, I'm gonna trust the county administrator that this particular adjusting the attorney reporting or getting our own counsel attorney is an IA issue. I'm gonna trust that, and if he's wrong, we're gonna have issues in March when we come back here. And so, I just want to say that that's, I'm gonna end up supporting this motion because the short of it is, we can move around the puzzle pieces of IMC all we want. Until we get a good majority and people are happy with how both governments work, it's gonna be up to the majority, but the attorney position is stopping us from making changes and doing things already, and that's one that we don't have to open up the agreement for. So I'll leave it with that and just say that I don't like going to court without an attorney, and I also feel uncomfortable not having someone represent me in my capacity as a county administrator, county, never that, I don't want that job, county commissioner on Blueprint. I'm done, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bann. I believe all commissioners have spoken on the issue. I don't see anybody in queue. It's not a repetition of what you already said, right?
It's on point.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Bann.
Well said, Commissioner O'Keefe, well said. I have two follow-up questions that pop to my mind based on his conversation with the county administrator. One, so it takes for two to hire, both to hire and one to fire with the IMC, correct? Mr. Administrator? I'm sorry, Madam Chair, my address is higher.
That's correct, I believe, yeah.
So theoretically, not saying I want to do this, but theoretically, this board could move to direct you as the IMC to terminate a position in Blueprint?
No, you could not. That would be interference.
Okay, so that would be interference with the IMC?
Yeah, that would be, that would be generally considered interference with my administrative responsibilities.
Okay. And then, you know, one point I want to piggyback on what you said is, Commissioner O'Keefe, is, part of my frustration is, in the Blueprint meetings, she's directing us to these meetings to make change, and then in this meeting, we're being directed that, oh, in the IA, now in the Blueprint meetings is where we make change. So where is the correct meeting format if we want to make a change? Is it in the IA or is it here?
Thank you, Commissioner Bann. I think that's a viable question. Has everybody spoken that wants to speak? Because I'd like to speak as well. Anybody? You have your hand up again?
No, I just want to hear the Mr. Administrator's question.
Do you want to respond to that?
And thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioner Bann, just to make it clear, you were speaking to the attorney position.
No, I'm sorry, I'm talking about, I'm talking about, if we want to make a change in Blueprint, do we have the conversation in the IA meetings or do we have it here?
Yes, it would depend on if you were talking about issues that were generally in the interlocal agreement, which again are just those broad structural issues, which sometimes those have come up, not very often, but if it was anything else, project-related, organization-related, just about anything you can think of, it would be at the IA, and you'd be able to give that direction at the IA, and in most cases, upon a simple majority vote of the IA. Again, sometimes, and Chastity will back me up on this, when you kind of move into those larger areas that are governed by the interlocal agreement, the distribution of the proceeds, the overall arching organizational structure and some of those other things, then you would get into having to come to the city and to the county.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Bann, thank you for those questions. I appreciate all the input from the commissioners on this issue and on item 25, and I'd just like to weigh in on it. I recognize, Mr. County Administrator, why there's such a high threshold for making changes to the interlocal agreement. And I believe in our Blueprint meeting, we discussed that, and I believe it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. County Administrator, that as far as the interlocal agreement, if we want to make changes, it has to be done in a bifurcated manner, am I correct? With the city on one side and the county on the other, with both agreeing by a supermajority to make those changes?
Not a supermajority, but I see in my peripheral vision the county attorney moving in. But again, not, it would just have to be taken at the city commission and the county commission respectively relative to the interlocal agreement.
Okay, with the majority, with the majority vote. Okay. So that is the bifurcated process that we have to make changes to the interlocal agreement. Now, we voted at our Blueprint meeting to engage in the substantial amendment process as it relates to affordable housing, and we agreed to look at the infrastructure, I believe the motion was infrastructure and OEV, but I think it was amended for infrastructure. So, that, that process is totally different from the bifurcated process where both the city and the county have to agree upon it. So, we do have an agenda item coming back the next time Blueprint meets as it relates to amending the interlocal agreement, I believe.
You, no, if I may, you've got several items coming back, and some of them are distinct items, like the one you just referred to, related to the affordable housing as a proposed new project on the infrastructure side of, which would come back to the IA and initiate that process you talked about. So that would just be an item that came back to the IA. The other item that's coming back to the IA is the item that we've talked about tonight, having to do with the organizational structure, and it would come back as well to the IA for your consideration relative to the staff reporting directly to the IA board.
Okay, and we also have the substantial amendment process as it relates to projects that might be ongoing, might have been substantially, I guess, completed or maybe 50% completed. So in order to make changes on those projects such as the airport gateway, we have to go through the substantial amendment process.
Correct.
Correct. So it's different processes, I think, that might be getting us confused, you know, confused as a board as far as the changes that we want...
I'm not confused, Madam Chair, I'm not confused.
Okay, Commissioner Proctor, I'll let you talk, let you talk.
I just don't want you to say I'm confused.
Let me talk, let's be respectful, okay? I totally vehemently disagree with each one of the commissioners up here that have indicated that the Blueprint attorney is skewing her legal opinions towards staff. I totally disagree, having looked at the rules, the interlocal agreements, knowing a little bit about Robert's Rules of Order. I believe that the Blueprint attorney is giving legal advice to the Blueprint board based on the laws, based on Robert's Rules of Order. I don't believe her opinions would be any different if she was reporting directly to this board or she's reporting to the IMC. I just totally disagree, and I think that it's wrong for this board or even at our Blueprint meetings to attack the attorney just based on her opinion and her legal opinion, and she has her Robert's Rules of Order, she has interlocal agreement, she has all the rules in front of her. Now, what I do hear from this board is a distrust, apparently a distrust in the legal opinions that, in the direction that we receive from the Blueprint attorney, and I don't believe she's trying to be an obstructionist. Her title is to be the parliamentarian. And if someone in Blueprint offers a motion that I have to carry, it's her job to intercede and say, "Commissioners, that's an improper motion," and I think she has done that to the best of her ability. So in that respect, and in recognizing that there's some level of distrust of the attorney, Mr. County Administrator, as a member of the IMC, and as chair of Blueprint, I believe we will continue to have disruptive meetings if we don't trust the parliamentarian and the Blueprint attorney. And so in order for us to be productive and to move forward and not waste time on these issues and attacking staff, who I believe do a great job with Blueprint, I believe it's time, Mr. County Administrator, that perhaps we look at designating an attorney position for Blueprint.
Amen.
For Blueprint directors. I believe that we can move forward with what we're supposed to do for the citizens of this county. And I believe, and nobody might not agree, but I believe Blueprint attorney is owed an apology.
From who?
For attack, for the attacks on her, and I don't want to be specific, but I just believe that she is doing her job, she is paid to do her job, she reports to the director of place, but in turn, she responds to all of us. I believe if we have a question for her, you pick up the phone as it relates to Blueprint, she will answer those questions. As an attorney, I believe she's a great, a great attorney. We don't just pull answers out of the hat, and I think our county attorney here will tell you that. She gives us sound opinion as far as what we need to do from a county commission standpoint, and I believe the Blueprint attorney does the same thing every time we meet. Now, just because we don't like the answers that she gives or the direction that she gives us, it doesn't mean that she's any less of a great attorney. And I will admit that many of the answers that she provides and many of the parliamentarian procedures that she addresses, a lot of the commissioners and directors are disagree with. But disagreeing with her position doesn't equate to her being incompetent and not being a good attorney. So, if nobody else apologizes, I would like to just apologize to her on behalf of Blueprint, and this might not be the right place, Mr. County Commissioner, and Mr. County Commissioner and our county attorney, but I just, I totally disagree, and I believe that what we need to do to stop all the dissension is move forward, get some directions on having an attorney that's designated as the Blueprint attorney, answerable to Blueprint, so that we can move forward, was the work of Blueprint. to blueprint, so that we can move forward with the work of blueprint. Mr. County Administrator.
Again, but just to clarify again, based on the direction at your last IA meeting, that is part of what's coming back to you as an agenda item for your next meeting in blueprint in February?
Oh, okay.
So the hiring issue.
Yes, Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So with the point that our chair just made comes back specifically that we would attain an independent lawyer, similar to Thornton Williams, our lawyer one time, Thornton. And he didn't report to all of that, to Arty or nobody like that. That's what we need, go back to that.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor, Commissioner Maddox.
Madam Chair, thank you for your comments, and I agree with you. I don't think that Attorney Dawson's opinions would be different whether, no matter who she reported to. I think it's an issue of sometimes when our attorney disagrees with us, and we're not allowed to do what we want to do, we want to find a new attorney that'll tell us yes. I don't, but I will, I will say this, if we're going to have the conversation around having a blueprint attorney, I don't see any reason why, because I don't think there's any branch of government unless, Madam County Attorney, you can, you can correct me, where there's an attorney for staff and then there's an attorney for the board or the commission or the governing body. And I would believe that the money that this attorney will be paid from would be blueprint funds to pay for an attorney. I'm not at all in support in having two attorneys. I'm not all, in all the support of having an attorney that reports to staff and then an attorney that reports to us, knowing that really, you just stated yourself, the attorney that will report to blueprint will simply be there to be the parliamentarian. Because Attorney Dawson, who reports to staff, does 99.9% of everything else. So even if we had procedural questions for the attorney that reports to blueprint, if that attorney's opinion does not fit with the attorney that reports to staff, staff attorney is still going to do what staff attorney is going to do. So I don't think, quite frankly, I don't think having an attorney that reports to blueprint is the answer. I don't, I don't think, I don't think you change anything. I think it just complicates the situation even more, unless you're just going to change policy to say that Susan Dawson reports to us, that we hire and fire that position. But even if you do that, again, she's only there to be the parliamentarian. That's it. Mister Administrator, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, if you allow, Mister Administrator, is that, does, does the blueprint attorney have any other responsibility to our board during that meeting than to give us factual information about contracting and everything else that's done by blueprint and to serve as the, as the parliamentarian? Does he have any other responsibilities than that?
At the meeting, no, that, that's, that's correct, Commissioner. I just want to add that when you have your item in February, you'll have all the information there, and the IA at that point in time will give us direction to then bring back more details, like how could you structure these things?
Right.
How would you structure, how would you divide it, these types of things? If, and I say if, because it's a big if, depending on what the IA does, then you would have that, that conversation or not. But, but again, you'll be in that position at that time to, as the IA, to make that determination, which is your role.
I won't belabor the point, Madam Chair. Just understand that I'm not, I'm not in favor of having two attorneys. If we have one attorney, she can report to us, she can report to, to staff, but two attorneys don't work for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. And I just want to say this as well. I just see a chaotic situation. And I'm trying to articulate what I see as a solution. And what I hear from this body is distrust of the blueprint attorney. And quite frankly, if I heard, if I was a blueprint attorney hearing the comments here, hearing the comments in, in our blueprint meeting, attacking my integrity, attacking my credibility, I would resign. I would, I would resign. I probably would, I wouldn't stay. So it's clear that many of you distrust her. I'm just the opposite. I think she's given us what the law requires. She's telling us what the law requires. But to move forward and get beyond the chaotic situation, I think we could designate an attorney position. I think we could delineate certain responsibilities during the meeting. And I know some members are concerned about hiring and firing authority if we wanted that and, you know, and any other specifics that we wanted to designate during the meetings. But we are dysfunction, we will be dysfunctional now with all of the distrust that we have, I don't have, but many members have against our attorney. And I think next month, we can discuss it, once the item comes back, Commissioner Maddox, you know, when it comes back, and then we'll have the city weighing in, you know, as, as well. But that's just my, that's just my opinion on how to move forward in a more congenial manner and have legal counsel that the board could trust, or would trust, rather. Okay?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Proctor.
Point of information, Madam Chair. Is we going to be allowed to talk among ourselves as a board? Our administrator told us tonight that we would have to take a matter that we were told to come here and talk about. He's told us now we got to go back to the IA and talk about it. And when we get to the IA, you know, sometimes you stop little children from talking about certain things. Is we going to be childlike handled and told what we can't say and talk about and we can't, we have literally been told we can't talk about?
Well, at this meeting, I don't know if we can make a decision.
Can we suspend or waive the rules to be able to talk about? I mean, can we do that?
I think we will be allowed, absolutely, to discuss it, because it's very, it's a very important step, very important, very important issue. I have been on the blueprint board for at least two, three years, and I just never had a situation where the attorney has been attacked, so.
I mean, I'm sorry.
It's, okay, hold on, Commissioner Proctor, hold on one second. And I think it's unfortunate, and I personally think it's, I think it's wrong. I think there's a misconception. I don't believe any responses we receive from the attorney is skewed toward staff, because staff supports us. Blueprint staff does a great job in bringing agenda items back to us, explaining those items, asking, answering rather, any questions that we ask. They do a great, a great job. But we don't want this portion of government to be dysfunctional. And of course, I think we are willing to entertain any suggestions, but from, from what I hear, that's just, to me, that would be a solution to many of the concerns by members of the board. That's all. And like I said, Commissioner Proctor, I think we could delineate certain responsibilities for each one, or perhaps have another parliamentarian and maybe just have one person, one attorney at the meeting. But that's for discussion in February, okay, when that agenda item comes back. But I want us to just think about it. I threw it out so that we could think about it.
Madam Chair.
Okay. This is, Commissioner Proctor.
Madam Chair, thank you. I strongly disagree that the attorney has been attacked. That's just not my perception of what has occurred. And she's paid to answer questions, and we accept, and some advice, and it's not mandatory that we accept verbatim any attorney's advice. You don't even have to accept your doctor's advice, it's just an advisement. But this is unlike gumbo. Like I said, some of those flowers down there are sweet, some of them not, but they're all mixed up and they look pretty together. And our blueprint board is of a different philosophy of thought, tenor of perspective, discussion, perception, and all of that. But by and large, make no mistakes about it. It's been successful. I could easily say that. I don't know what, what it takes for the fair ground to ever happen in our lifetime. I don't know. But the movement, the effort to move projects along, get them scheduled, a timeline, Commissioner Bond used a great metaphor, that was not a metaphor, that blueprint is a, a construction clearinghouse for projects, brick and mortar. In projects, you like to see a sequence of, you know, what's coming next, what's the daytime specific, this and that. And what, the way we do our projects, we get, we get right away, we get the construction phase, and then we get the design phase. So that's what we get, design, right away, and all like that. Those are not specific dates, those are categories of work. And I like to see something unique and special occur along that way, a little more exacting. So we done all it on its own, and I got somewhere to go, you know.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. We have a motion on the floor, so.
What was the motion? Option one.
All those, thank you all for your discussion. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, let it be known I'm saying aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Any opposition?
Aye.
Well, any opposition?
Aye.
Commissioner Proctor and Commissioner Cavani in opposition. The motion passes. Thank you so much. Mr. County Administrator, agenda item number 25.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, and I'll ask the county attorney to help me out on this one, anywhere she wants to, to jump in. But commissioners, this is a, a report on additional information on homelessness. The item is a follow-up on several of the actions the board took back in May at your workshop. The item focuses on four specific areas. The feasibility of a county-wide ordinance regulating activities in road mediums that promote safety. Two, details on ongoing efforts to support, permanent support of housing. Three, the item provides analysis on alternative sleeping locations. And finally, it culminates with a recommendation to evaluate an ordinance that would prohibit solicitation of panhandling on private properties. Therefore, this item recommends options one and two. I have no speakers on this specific item. Commissioners.
So move, Madam Chair, one and two.
I have any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Is there any discussion, Commissioner O'Keefe?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I have some questions on this. We, in particular, to the, the part that recommends a, creating an ordinance, private property ordinance, to speed along the process for private property owners of moving folks from panhandling or camping or other things on their property. I talked at length with county attorney and county administrator on this, and my question is, what is the implementation plan for where these folks go? And my concern is, over the past few years, not mass, not, say, 2001 now, let's say, 2000, let's say 2019, 2020, we saw local government, I don't know if it was us or the city or someone else, clear out some encampments, and then also changed some park structures and bus stops and stuff like that where people commonly slept. And part of the result was those folks got kind of pushed out into more public areas that created more incidences and more complaints for people. And so while I support a private property owner's right to speed along the process if they don't want folks living there, implementation is very important because we're trying to fix a problem, and I don't want to create a problem. So I really want to know what the plan is. Where are these folks going? And, or have we thought about that and where will they go? Because, because this was in response to, you know, constituent and local business input, the chamber input, and part of it is to clear up these incidents. You want people, when you go to CVS, which I don't know why this is the example I had from all my briefings randomly, make a note, we'll make a note of that, and get harassed in the parking lot. But if all of a sudden we push, you know, this isn't just going to happen to CVS, this also applies to wooded encampments, private property like that, and I don't want us to say we're doing something and we immediately, there's more visual of it and nobody's happy.
Thank you, Commissioner. So the ordinance that we propose or recommend bringing back only speaks to panhandling and solicitation, not sleeping or camping on private, on property, which, all right, right now is statutorily, businesses have the authority to, because it's their private property, to have someone removing, trespass them. This specifically speaks to activity of panhandling and solicitation. When we spoke to many of property owners, business owners, that they don't want to blanket trespass the individual, a lot of times those people patron their business. The problem is the activity is this, is what they want to be, be able to deter, not the actual individual.
Okay, thank you. And so this does not create where there's encampments, I won't name where they are, but encampments that the host deputies took me on that are on private property, there's not necessarily panhandling there, this does not create an ordinance where we or another agency or organization will go in and tell those people to move on based on this ordinance.
Law enforcement only does that when a prop, when a private property owner says that someone needs to be removed from their property and they trespass them, they can do that now.
Okay, thank you. As for the penalties, my understanding is if we do not specify a penalty, the default penalty is up to $500 fine and up to, and/or up to 60 days in jail. If we vote to bring this for, I believe, public hearing is what we're voting for, would we now need to specify if we want to set a lower penalty? Or would we be able to create that specification as part of the public hearing process?
Well, we'd be bringing an item first, so we would not be establishing the public hearing. So we will be bringing, key first is the policy itself, the ordinance, and we would actually evaluate and see what other communities have established as far as penalties. But we also do that in partnership with our homeless providers and ensuring that, again, we don't want to create barriers where people can't get into housing also. So all those things will be taken into consideration when we bring something back to the board as policy first. And should the board see that policy is, is important to put in place, then we would schedule a public hearing.
Thank you. The, the agenda item mentioned a lot of meetings, community meetings with community groups, business leaders, community organizations, staff. Were any homeless or formerly homeless individuals consulted in these meetings about this ordinance?
No, those meetings did not include, there are individuals that are part of street outreach teams who are members, who have participated in some of these meetings. The issue, and as we've had this conversation before, is they're aware is that a lot of individuals who do a lot of panhandling and solicitation, a lot of times are not from our community, a lot of times they're transients. And the issue goes beyond just, and again, to make it clear that this is not a homeless issue, is that another concern has come up is the fact that a lot of times it's issues with petitioners. People going to private businesses, trying to petition for amendments on the constitution and things like that. Those, so that's why it's more than just panhandling for money, and that's why it's very clear we talk about solicitation too. These are concerns that we've raised. The thing that we want to continue to educate our community, Commissioner, is that, you know, the people that are, that are panhandling and solicitation, there is not a nexus to homelessness.
Got you.
And we got to continue to share that story, and we do a good job working with the Big Ben Continuum of Care for doing that.
Excellent. And then, so this would apply to Boy Scouts, all that kind of stuff too. Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, community groups.
They would have to have permission of a private property owner.
Excellent. Thank you. Those are my questions. I'm not going to support this, and I'll keep my comments brief, because I feel like we're pulling the string on the back of my doll, and I'm just going to say the same thing I always say, is I know this is not creating a criminal offense, this is a violation of ordinance, and it wouldn't go on someone's criminal record, but it, it increases the likelihood of a criminal offense occurring, like a resisting arrest, or, which sometimes is called an attitude check by. by defense attorneys. And, or if they get civil citation to appear somewhere, and they've missed that date, now it's a criminal thing. And so it's just, I don't see it as being a benefit for the downside. And I'll leave it with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Any other individuals, speakers on the line? And I will support it as well. I think we've already recognized, and our attorney has indicated that there is a certain amount of First Amendment rights when you're on the streets in the medium and what have you. But it's no such, no such First Amendment right on somebody else's property, on public property. And I appreciate, Ms. Lammy. And the report, thank you all for the report, indicating that most of the individuals primarily engaged in this type illegal activity are transients from all over the police, not necessarily individuals here in Leon County. That our, our street, Street Committee, dedicated sheriffs that works with the homeless, they're not those individuals that they're working with all the time to, to try to find, you know, affordable housing for them. So thank you for the, for the analysis, staff, and the review. Madam County Attorney, I appreciate it. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposition?
Aye.
One opposition. Thank you so much. Mr. County Administrator, is there anything else?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes your agenda items. However, we do have one citizen card in for citizens to be heard on non-agended items on this section of the agenda. Jessie Betz Bono? Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jessie Betz Bono, 1565 Clifford Hill Road. Good evening, respected members of the County Commission. I'm grateful to be standing before you today, and I will second Commissioner Proctor's comments. Madam Chair, you do look great tonight.
Thank you.
Again, my name is Jessie Betz Bono, and I'm here on behalf of the Clifford Hill Road Homeowners Association located in County District 5. We have proof that Waste Pro commercials trucks are damaging our private road. This proof includes videos, photos, drone footage, and emails from county staff that asserts Waste Pro is at fault for at least two sections of our damaged property. The timeline of proof extends from February 2023 to today. Our HOA cannot get Waste Pro or our previously established county contacts to respond to any of our attempts at communication, so the HOA cannot get this issue resolved on our own. Damage from these Waste Pro trucks is ongoing and worsening by the week. We are a neighborhood of just six households of moderate means. We cannot afford to repair all the Waste Pro damaged areas of our neighborhood. Two households recently paid to repave their private driveway, which Waste Pro is now using to turn their large commercial trucks around. So even when we do shell out money for private repairs, Waste Pro just uses and then damages those areas. Our neighborhood is concerned about ongoing safety issues as well as damage to our personal vehicles and our homes because of this ongoing issue. Our HOA kindly asks that the county helps us remedy the situation and establish a resolution with Waste Pro through continued communication. And simply put, we just want Waste Pro to pay for what they've damaged at this point. I have a few copies of our timeline, a collected evidence log that, again, stems from February all the way till now, and then all of the contact information for the parties involved thus far. I do thank you for your time and consideration of this growing problem, and really hope that we can get some sort of resolution in the near future as the situation continues to worsen.
Thank you. One question, you said in your neighborhood. What neighborhood is?
It's the Clifford Hill Road. It's a private neighborhood association of just six households.
And you say you have something in writing?
Yes, I have a timeline, some evidence we've collected, people who have been important players. And I'm sorry, I only brought eight copies. I did not realize the diocese is so big. But I've also included my contact information, where I can send you pictures, videos. We even have drone footage of Waste Pro trucks ingress, their usual operations, and egress out of the neighborhood where they are driving on all of these areas in our street.
Right, well, thank you so much. If you will give it to staff, and they will, will follow up.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anything further, Mr. County Administrator?
Conclude your business, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We are now into commission comments. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Madam Chair. I'll bring it up in, in discussion.
Thank you. Madam County Attorney, do you have any?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We are now into commission comments, Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Congratulations, you do look beautiful in light in your purple.
But thank you.
I hate, I missed a memo, I wouldn't have worn purple. I see a lot of purple around the room. But your chief of staff didn't tell nobody that we're supposed to wear purple today. My favorite color. But congratulations, and I look forward to your leadership. And you're doing an amazing job as our chair. We have a very special proclamation that I would like to ask for today. We are running up on the retirement of a Leon County legend, Alan Rosenzweig. So I would like to ask for a proclamation recognizing his years of service and all he's done for our county, and how he has propped our county administrator up and made him look good in ways he could never as, as if he did not have Mrs. Rosenzweig. You know, Vince has started to grow a beard in commemoration of Alan's retirement.
I was clean shaven before this meeting, Commissioners. I was clean shaven before this meeting, and I had Commissioner Caban's colored hair.
So, Madam Chair, I want to request a proclamation.
Is there a second? Thank you. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposition here in none? Thank you.
Again, Madam Chair, congratulations, and I look forward to your leadership.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Keefe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you could believe it, I had no comments until our speaker. I would like to ask staff, to County Administrator, to reach out to, ma'am, I'm sorry I didn't get your name, but make sure that all the evidence is in the record and sent to, I'll ask at least sent to me. This is in that fun borderland, whether it's between me or Commissioner Welch. But either way, I would like information back from you on what the damage looks like and what actions we have taken to try to collect commiserate amounts to reimburse those residents.
On the Waste Pro?
On the Waste Pro issue for Clifford Hills.
Is that okay? Okay, we've got it. Thank you. Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have, actually, I guess, three things. Number one, congratulations on your first meeting as chairwoman.
Thank you.
Looking forward to serving with you for the next year in your, in your position.
Thank you.
The Tallahassee Airport has, is in the process right now of applying for the federal, the foreign trade zone designation. And part of that process requires them to, to ask the counties in the nearby area that we, that want to be included in the region to submit approval of their inclusion as, as a named partner in the application. So what I'm passing around here right now, and I'll make sure the record is, has it as well, is a, a letter template that we are being asked to, if, if this board were to approve the federal trade zone involvement of Leon County, we would submit this letter filled in with Leon County information. And then the other piece here is basically just a one pager talking about the benefits of the foreign trade zone. Obviously, by having a federal trade zone, you can have companies come in, bring in goods from outside the United States, not pay duty on it as part of their manufacturing operations. So it's kind of a no-brainer, but I wanted to, to ask the, the board here to make a motion. My motion is to approve Leon County's inclusion as part of the application for this foreign trade zone designation.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Quick question, Madam Chair. Discussion, just a quick question. Do we forego any local government tax revenue? Is it, or is it just the, under this agreement?
No, we do not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One other question.
What, what, actually, I'm not sure the answer to that with the...
That's fine.
Let me let the County Administrator address it because I think it's already part of our legislative priorities, County Administrator.
That's the only thing I was going to add. Whether we do or not, we've already approved it and supported it as part of our legislative priorities.
It's a good question of Commissioner O'Keefe. I'm not positive on the answer to that, but I can tell you that I think the economic benefits would surely outweigh the products that would otherwise be subject to the local sales tax.
I have one question on this. Does this?
Yes, sir.
Does this involve, human beings are merely products?
Products.
Thank you.
I believe it passed. I know somebody stopped me. So all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposition? Gary Gunn.
Thank you, ma'am. And then the last thing I had is, you know, when, when the Commissioner on Status of Women and Girls came and spoke and gave their excellent report on their progress and their future efforts for the next year, they mentioned period poverty. And I'd be remiss if I didn't embarrass my chief of staff, Jody Wilkoff, who has been one of the leaders in this community, working with Leon County to, to help address period poverty issues. And, and she and a group of other women leaders over the last couple of years have been working with Leon County, with the City of Tallahassee, and other organizations to, to help alleviate period poverty in our libraries and in other buildings. So I want to thank Jody Wilkoff for all the great work she's doing in that area. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Jody is here. Will you stand up in the back? I'm looking at her. Let's give her a round of applause. We appreciate all your support in that ongoing initiative. Commissioner Caban.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I do have some business to discuss, but I'll reserve my time for the next meeting. So that way, you know, we, I know we all have somewhere to be. I'm looking forward to celebrating with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Caban. Commissioner Proctor.
Madam Chair, I feel the same way, except to invite the community out on next Monday to the FAMU versus the University of Oregon. The Ducks from Oregon come to FAMU gym. This is the first, they call a power five basketball team to ever set foot on our HBCU campus for a basketball game. So that's going to be on Monday, coming Monday, next week, Monday. Invite all to come out. Coach McCullough, the FAMU Rowers need our help. I have a letter from the Leon County Detention Facility. I'd like to give it to our county attorney. The issues involved from the detainee exceeds my office's capacity to address. So those things being said, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Now, new vice chair, congratulations, Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and, and thank you all for your trust and support in, in voting me to be vice chair. It, it's heartfelt, thank you. I really sincerely appreciate your, your believing in me enough to give me that responsibility. I just have one minute, just real quick. I would like to ask for a proclamation to honor Stan Goldstein, who is a former teacher at Leon High School and Childs High School. We just named our football field after him at Childs High School. Legendary coach, if you've ever went to Leon or, or Childs. So just ask for a proclamation.
Do I have a motion? Thank you. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposition? Thank you, you've got it, Commissioner Welch. Anything else?
Yes, ma'am, just real quick. Wanted to say thank you to our Veteran Services staff for the outstanding job that they do every year with Operation Thank You. I am so proud of the way we treat veterans in Leon County. Our Veteran Services Office does an incredible job. Operation Thank You is one of my favorite days of the year, between the breakfast and seeing our colleagues in there, you know, the camaraderie, and then going into the, and doing the parade. It's just an awesome time, and I just want to really commend our staff. We have, we have committed ourselves to really treating our veterans right in Leon County, and I certainly want to see us continue to do that. So thank you, everybody, for that, and that's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch. And I'd just like to, again, extend my appreciation to the commission for the vote of confidence, and elected me as your chair for the next fiscal year. And I congratulate my co-chair as well. We want to thank all of you all for attending our meeting tonight. I believe we, we covered some very important issues as, as we move forward. And if there is nothing further, thank you all again. I declare the meeting adjourned.